I wasn't screwed in. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lunenary Town Council meeting for January 12th at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. We had a tragedy in town on Tuesday night. Our hearts and prayers and souls go out to the Picard family and their loss. Thank you. Okay, I understand the chairperson of the supervisors is here tonight. She would like to be, would like to address us during public comment. Hi Kristen, name and address for the record, please?
Absolutely. Kristen Grajesus, 17 Sutton Place. I am the chairperson of the supervisors, the checklist. We have had a number of, well, a couple of concerns that were raised by members of town and we received a resolution to those concerns from the Attorney General. And since those concerns hadn't been resolved publicly, I thought it would be appropriate for me to bring the letter received from the Attorney General and with your permission, I'm happy to read it or summarize it, whichever you'd prefer.
Feel free to read it into the record.
Absolutely. The purpose, this is from the Attorney General Jonathan Formella and the Deputy Attorney General James Buffetti. The purpose of this letter is to respond to your December 6, 2023 communications that identified 95 voters who you alleged wrongfully voted in the November 3, 2020 election in Lunenary. The only justification that you provided for your suspicion that these 95 people wrongfully voted was that an unnamed source compared the voter checklist against the National Change of Address Program. As we explained to you previously, there are numerous innocent reasons one household member may retain their address despite another household member moving out of that address. A review of a sample of names that you reported revealed no evidence suggesting that any of those people violated a state election law. The Election Law Unit cannot investigate voters based solely on a person's unsupported suspicion that the voters may have violated an election law. Accordingly, the Election Law Unit cannot investigate the remaining names on your report based on your unsupported allegations that they may have wrongfully voted. Should you discover evidence demonstrating that one of these voters was not in fact domiciled in Lunenary, please provide it to this office and we will review that evidence. Background: Over the past few months, the Election Law Unit has been copied on communications to and from the Lunenary supervisors of the checklist regarding efforts of the supervisors to remove registered voters who are no longer resided in Lunenary from the checklist. The supervisors appear to have politely and diligently responded to all inquiries and the supervisors appear to be following the requirements of RSA Chapter 654. On December 6, 2023, you reported to this office that you had a list of 95 voters who wrongfully voted in the November 3, 2020 election in Lunenary. When asked how you knew these people wrongfully voted in that election, you responded only that a "reliable" source and quote, used the National Change of Address and 2020 Lunenary Voter Checklist to figure it out. You declined to identify your source. During that call, an investigator from this office explained to you that just because one or more members of a household moved, that does not mean the entire household moved and should be removed from the checklist. You subsequently emailed that list of 95 voters who you alleged wrongfully voted. That list includes the name of 95 persons with Lunenary addresses. Your email did not contain any other attachments or explanation as to why you believe these 95 people wrongfully voted in Lunenary. This office reviewed a sample of 10 voters in six households from your list. This office, this office's review did not reveal any violation of state election law. For example, in one case, two voters did not improperly vote in Lunenary because although their mother sold her Lunenary house, they continued to live in Lunenary at their father's residence. In another case, two Yoo Kava voters, that's uniformed and civilian voters who live out of the country, continued to use their prior Lunenary addresses to vote absentee despite the parents of one of those voters having sold the Lunenary home. RSA 657-2 specifically allows persons eligible to vote as a Yoo Kava voter to vote absentee at state elections in the city or town which was his or her last home. In other cases, voters sold their residence days or weeks before the November 3, 2020 election, but there was no evidence that they established domicile in another municipality prior to the election. See RSA 654-2, once domicile is established, it continues to exist until another such domicile is gained. The Election Law Unit cannot investigate citizens based on unsupported suspicion. Based on the information that you were willing to provide to this office, it appears the only reason you believe these 95 people wrongfully voted in the November 3, 2020 Lunenary election is that the people lived at an address from which a household member moved. This office explained to you that there are any number of reasons why a person may lawfully continue to vote in Lunenary. This office's review of a sample of the names confirmed that there was no evidence the reviewed voters wrongfully voted in Lunenary. This office opens investigations when it receives credible reports of election law violations. unsupported suspicions that misconduct may have occurred are not an appropriate basis for initiating an election law violation investigation. Put differently, this office cannot invade the privacy of citizens by opening investigations without a reasonable belief that those citizens violated the law. Taken together, your communication and list of names cannot justify this office opening investigations into each person on your list. Sincerely, Brendan A. O'Donnell, Assistant Attorney General, Civil Bureau.
And the letter was addressed to who?
It was addressed to Representative Perez.
Okay, thank you. Well, well done. Good job. Glad to hear the supervisors are doing their job.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
So, within the letter, there was mention of that the 95 names came from some other source?
Correct.
Is there, what is, were you told what that source was or is there any idea of what that source was?
That it was a private citizen in town.
Okay.
Thank you, Kristen.
Absolutely. Have a wonderful day, everybody.
You too.
I'd like to respond. There's an ongoing investigation.
Name and address, please.
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. A group of people, not from Lunenary, had met on Janu-, uh, met in person. The names that you provided, the movers, were already provided to the AG and the SOA and the Voter Confidence Committee on June of 2022 and again on January of 2023. This is an ongoing investigation. We met in person on January 2023 with Matthew Connolly, Dick Tracy, and Adam Edwards. We again provided the 15,000 names of people who moved out of state or country but had cast votes in their names in 2020 as well. A thousand signed affidavits from our desk canvases showed deeds transferred and yet both the seller and the buyer voted in the 2020 election. We received a similar response to the one that you have gotten. As a matter of fact, our case is still open. The names you are attempting to get investigated are part of a huge list that both the AG and the SOS have had in their possession since June of 2022. When we provided the same info to the clerk from a small town with 10 of these 2020 voters, he found a voter had voted in two New Hampshire towns and pressed charges. The clerks have no ability to look outside the state. Unfortunately, we have no real visible movement from the AG or the SOS. What can we do? File a formal complaint to the legislature about the failure of the town to follow election laws? Expand your issues to everything you have found and include their failure to follow the process? I'm attaching Wyndham's last complaint because it was a great example of the complete election process failure this state suffers. Your complaint would be additive to the second Wyndham complaint in the District 24 Senate race. Unless the legislation seems to fail, they'll be thinking everything is working well in New Hampshire and working just fine. Put the selectmen, number two, put the selectmen on notice. I saw in the video of the Lunenary selectmen, they were horrible. I'm just quoting. I am sorry, Christine. They should be put on formal notice of failure to ensure the election laws are being followed. It is their constitutional responsibility to ensure election laws are being followed. We were told this from the AG's office directly. We keep seeking relief from the DOJ and the SOS and they won't investigate process failure as there is no punitive consequences unless it is fraud. If you need to help on this, somebody, the name will help you and coach you. I'm copying him. Push back on the AG. Your information is not new. They have had this as part of their material. They were provided way back in 2022 and as such, they have plenty of time to work on this. I will follow up with Matthew Connolly today on the status of his investigation. This is part of an ongoing investigation.
So who wrote that?
A group of people who are working on voter.
So you won't identify who wrote that even while you're reading it into the record? As well as you won't identify your anonymous source on this?
No. Her name is Brenda Town. Okay, Brenda Town.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, moving on, we are in public comment.
Richard Polinsky, 89 Hall Road. I want to talk a little bit about the right to know letters that people seem to have to write all the time to get information out of this town. And in particular, the one that recently the courts in New Hampshire said was frivolous. Six times within the 20-page final decision. And it was the one that was brought against, well, the complaint was against Deb Paul for a word that she used at a meeting and the word was seduce. Anybody with a rudimentary understanding of the English language would know the word was used in the correct context in the situation she used it. It was not of sexual nature in any shape or form. The judge also agreed with that. The judge said that the town should have known better. It should have never happened. Town manager is the one that put in the complaint. Town chair is the one that brought the complaint to Deb Paul. Nobody tried to stop this knowing that this was a loser. It was so bad, in fact, that they ended up having to pay her attorney's costs. It cost the taxpayer, I don't know what the town's fees were, but probably about $15,000. Hers were $6,109.80 that you had to pay per the letter from your attorney, town's attorney. We also have the Gandia situation where there was a no trespassing order illegally put on them. And the ACLU had to get involved to get that rescinded. I think they gave you 24 or 48 hours. Things getting out of control in this town. You know, I still have one I can bring against the town for July when you had me thrown out of the meeting because you didn't hold a public hearing that was required and after I was thrown out, you had the public hearing knowing I wasn't here. You guys know you had to have that because I had given you guys, one of the councils, the information beforehand. What do the people in this town have to do to get correct answers from this town? When is Deb Paul and the Gandias going to get an apology for what should have never happened? Never happened. I mean, people, read the 20-page court order and you'll see how frivolous it was. What a waste of taxpayers' money. You wonder why I always come here angry? These are just some of the reasons. Quite frankly, you owe the Gandias, at least on the trespass order, because I know the other stuff's in litigation. And you know Deb Paul, a public apology and nothing less. And quite frankly, two of the councils were up at one of the hearings, John and Chad. Nobody tried stopping this. You just let it go ahead like it's a big joke. What you're trying to do is basically put a slap, what they call a slap suit. Strategic litigation against something participation, I forget, people's participation. You're trying to scare people from speaking. It's ridiculous. You guys tell me I need to grow up? You guys really need to grow up. So I'd like you people to apologize to these people and quite frankly, when that's done, the way this town's being run with the employees that are leaving and everything that's going on, those in the no-no, you guys should have stopped this. You didn't. The town manager, when this is done, should resign. Also, the town chair on the council and the town co-chair who were at this and knew about it and did nothing about it should also resign. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, leadership, citizenry. Just coming at you with our most updated command update since December. We haven't seen you guys since the new year. So you might have noticed three shipping containers out back behind Central Station. I think I mentioned at my last update that we are building a training facility out back because during our SWAT analysis, when our leadership team took over in September, one of the threats was the lack of experience. And so how we fill that void is through training. And the experience will come as the job and, as the job progresses. What's unique about this is SL Chase, who's a local crane company, donated their crane service and their labor to set the shipping containers, a 40-footer and two 20-footers in position. And we are very grateful for that and we're going to welcome, we're going to thank them for that. The swift water rescue call that you guys saw happen on December 22nd, right before Christmas. So, one thing we try really hard at Lunenary Fire is to not live in an echo chamber and we like to be contrarian and we like to test those things that we think are working. We had a pickup truck traveling southbound on Mammoth Road at a high rate of speed that drifted off the roadway and crashed into Beaver Brook on the Lunenary-Wyndham Town Line. These were in fast-moving waters that were very frigid and the occupant in his vehicle became partially submerged and trapped in the vehicle in the water. The Lunenary Fire Department professionals who arrived came fully staffed at 12 members, which highlights the importance of staffing because the youngest battalion at Lunenary Fire in age, which is Battalion Three, effectively pulled off a very high-risk, low-frequency event. High-risk, low-frequency events are very, very dangerous. These are the type of emergency calls that keep myself and my colleague Chief Kim Bernard up at night. They don't happen all the time, so there's very little exposure to them. But when they do happen, a lot can go wrong to the firefighters, the police officers, or the people involved. And this battalion, the youngest fire battalion at Lunenary Fire, pulled this rescue off almost flawlessly. And so we're very proud of them. It just, it, what it does is it reaffirms that the operational tempo, the leadership that we have, the training, the dedication, our regressive mindset towards training is working and it's building a culture of professionals that are second to none in the state of New Hampshire as far, as far as fire-based EMS goes, second to none. We are all aware that on Tuesday, the town suffered a massive tragedy. Chris McCary, Eric Fairweather, Jacob Nar, now Chase Arnold. These are all kids of this community that have been killed. The reality is, it will happen again. It will happen again. That same battalion that pulled off the swift water rescue call, the youngest battalion in age, was also the same battalion that responded to the fatal on Nashua Road at Parmenter. And the youngest member of the fire department, who we just hired, is 19 years old. Chase was 17 years old. So as you can imagine, my firefighters are hurting right now because maybe they think they failed because they weren't able to affect the rescue. But what they were able to do is honor the dead. And they did that by ensuring that the family had a body provided back to them that was intact. This was an extended body recovery, which means a lot more time spent with the dead. And I am so proud of my fire department that they showed grace and professionalism and honor to take the extra slow time with Chase to get him to his family in one piece. And that, that's where we find the success for the fire department, is that family has their son in one piece. So we're hurting as an organization right now. The school is hurting, the community's hurting. But we'll get through it because we always do through sound leadership and support. With my relationship with Coach Slater, who's the chairman of the school board, myself and Deputy Chief LeBlanc offered our services to speak with the school's faculty, about 60 members of the high school about this event. Because we deal in death, we're more, we're used to it. We know how to work through it. We know how to communicate it to helpfully, to hopefully make sense to people that aren't used to dealing in death. And the message was to the, to the teachers who are in a very difficult position where they have to take care of themselves, but almost just as importantly, if not more, Mr. Cassidy, you can speak to this as an educator, they have to look out for their students who are hurting and confused. So the message was, if you're scared, if you're upset, if you're angry, if you're sad, it's okay. If you don't know why you're upset and why you're angry to the staff, that's okay. And it's okay because they're human beings. They're filled with emotion. And this tragedy is affecting them as it is for us and it's okay not to feel okay. The message was to keep talking about it amongst the staff because the more you talk about something so tragic, you pull a little, little of its venom away each time you bring it up. So as a team, through the leadership of Coach Slater, Katie Sullivan, Principal Barnes, they're going to talk about it. They're going to make sure that this tragedy doesn't stay tucked in a corner where it can grow and metastasize and then eventually come out and hurt someone. The big message was to these educators who are very confused, but they're warriors, they're staying in the fight, is that if you think something might be off with, through your gut and your heart with one of your students, ask. Don't be afraid to ask because that might well be the one thing that gets those students through some really trying times that's going to be with them for the rest of their lives. It's been a rough week, Mr. Chair.
I know. I mean, you did ask me to come to the scene. I did go to the scene. On behalf of the fire department, I went to the school board meeting that was going on that evening. It was, it was a long night and it couldn't be prouder of our people. It was a long night for the police department. It was a long night for the Hooks and Police Department. And we are grateful for everything that was done for his family. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Kathy Wagner, 15 Parmenter Drive. That was my property where it occurred. And Steve and I know that intersection well. And I'm just taking this opportunity to let the police and the fire know that if students are going to go there to place bouquets or give their condolences, please do not park on the roadways down there. We are renovating the farm. Please park in our driveways. I don't want to see any more kids hurt on that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you. With that said, I have been in touch with the Senator Carson today. She has asked DOT to come and meet with the town. We know we've taken steps in the past as well as a ballot, you know, vote on, on 102 and we are going to go back to the state again and see what we can do to, you know, to correct some of this. And we've been asking for years and sadly, maybe now they'll listen.
Bob Slater, 1 Stone End Road. I'd like to also thank Chief Butler and their entire staff for the remarkable work they did in the situation they were put in to preserve this tragic event and to work with the parents and our staff. So, thank you so much, Chief Butler and your entire staff. Chairman Farrell, thank you for keeping us updated that evening as we were in the middle of a meeting when this all went down. So we appreciate you coming out and updating the superintendent as well as the rest of the town staff that have been right by our side the whole way with this. So thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment?
Sean Favors, 73 Old Nashville Road. So when I was 13, my parents split up. And I remember how hard it was that summer, a lot of changes. We went and we went for school shopping and I ended up with like two pairs of pants for that year. And going through a growth spurt, being 6'2", that wasn't really fun. But I never understood the hard decisions that she had to make when looking at, you know, her new budget that she had to deal with. I did understand, once I became a college student, got out of college, looking for my first job and I had to make the choices between my cellphone bill, my heating bill and, you know, my rent. And I always think back to those times when I'm dealing with things now. And I just want everyone here to really keep in mind, you know, as we're talking about the budget here, that there are people in our community who, you know, they may have a change in circumstances. There's single parents, there's seniors on fixed incomes, there's kids trying to deal with a whole bunch of school loan debt, trying to find their first apartment. And just, it's easy to take a look at this stuff and just boil it down to just numbers and go, that's just a penny off the tax rate. And I think back to my college time and I think I tried to put this in the terms that we'll be looking at tonight. My phone bill would have been, one month of my phone bill would have been a tax rate impact of 10 cents. My summer heating bill would have been a tax rate impact of 15 cents. And two weeks of my groceries would have been a tax rate impact of 50 cents. I'm not saying these are easy decisions. I'm not saying there's not people in things in this town that we deserve to spend money on. I'm just saying, keep those people in mind as we're going through these things tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? With that, public comment is closed. So, I've mentioned before at other meetings that come down and ask questions. Don't believe the keyboard chaos that goes on on social media. Don't necessarily believe what's written in the local publications. Come down and ask questions. Some statements were made here tonight, so some of them I will address. With regards to the lawsuit that was brought up earlier about a frivolous lawsuit. Under federal law, when a harassment complaint is brought to the authority, the authority has no choice but to investigate that harassment complaint. That harassment complaint was thoroughly investigated and found to be completely unfounded. As a matter of fact, our investigation showed the exact same thing that the judge showed, exactly. Upon the completion of that investigation, the town attorney instructed the other members of the council who were not part of the, who were not part of what was being investigated, that that counselor should be informed of what took place and should be shown the letter and be able to read what happened. We did that. That counselor was also given an opportunity to come back in and sit with the HR director for as long a period as they wanted. Read the letter, ask whatever questions they wanted to ask. And they did that for 45 minutes. They could have wrote the letter down word for word. The only thing they couldn't do was take a copy of it. Because we have regulations, we have rules around harassment protection, around people filing complaints. So what we did as a community was, is we as a council, all five who were sitting up here, made the decision that we were going to defend the rights of people being able to bring forth a complaint without retaliation. That's why we didn't turn the document over. That's why we went to court. That's why we chose to protect the process. The five of us made that decision. And that's why we'll, you know, we'll always protect the employee's right to be able to do that. With regards to the complaint, the complainant was spoken to, was spoken to by the council. And we handled that as a personnel matter. Now, should it have not happened? No, it shouldn't have happened and our investigation showed the same. It appears the only reason that the complaint had to come out in public was is so it could get printed in a local publication. That's the way it happened, folks. That's what happened. You're out of order. You're out of order. You're, no, you're not. You're out of order. Public comment is closed. You are out of order. You are out of order. You are out of order. No, you're- No, Deb, you, you got to... You're out of order. 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 You, 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 you are out of order. You're out of order. You're out of control with your power. We're done. And, and you, and, and all this, listen, I'm not gonna stand here and argue with you. You published, you published every word of it in your newspaper. Well then, do it again. Okay? And if you don't like the way things are being done, then call the Attorney General, file charges, and have us investigate it. Thank you. We are moving on. Well, go right ahead. Go right ahead. Listen, if you can't behave, you can leave. It's all out there in the public view, everybody can read it. Sir, last time, you're out of order. And I always tell the truth, thank you. If you can't conduct yourself in a professional manner, you can leave. Period. All right, I'll take a motion to open a public hearing. All is in favor, sing by, by saying aye. All right, we're opening a public hearing for the town budget. All right, we're gonna go through these articles, and move them to the ballot, so we're gonna go through the council, the budget committee, and then go to the public. So Article One, election of town officers. To, to choose all necessary town officers for the ensuing year, or until another is chosen for appointed and qualified. Can I have a motion to move that to deliberative? All is in favor, sing by, by saying aye. Chair votes in the affirmative. We, let me see, I'm just gonna motion, motion... Next one is, an amendment to the town charter. Town Charter Treasurer. So, the town of London, they approve a town charter amendment summarized below. There shall be a town treasurer, hereafter a town treasurer called, who shall have all the powers and duties granted by the charter and state law. The treasurer shall be elected, at large basis, by three years in the town election, appointed by the, and remove that to be appointed by the town council, upon recommendation of the town manager for one year. Vacancies of the office of the treasurer will be fulfilled pursuant to state law. If the amendment is adopted, the town treasurer will be appointed by the town council, instead of being elected. If the amendment is adopted, the elected town treasurer shall remain in office until 2025 town, annual town election. Also, keep in mind, under the charter, that the town treasurer will also appoint a deputy town treasurer. That is the town treasurer's choice, once they're appointed. Questions from the council? Questions from the budget committee? Questions from the public?
Christine Perez, five Wesley Drive. This says that there's no property intact, won't these people be paid, aren't these paid positions?
It's already in the budget.
You put something in the budget, that we haven't passed?
The town treasurer currently is in the budget.
Wait a minute, I gotta, right now, we do not pay for a...
We do pay for a town treasurer.
Statement of two thousand five hundred dollars.
So you're saying, even the, even the elected person will only be paid two thousand dollars?
Regardless of who the town treasurer is, they'll be paid twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, that's what I needed to understand.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
Kathy Wagner, fifteen Parmera, twelve McGregor Court, Unit 403, and four lots at Pillsbury Cemetery. I am the current town treasurer. This was brought up last year, and it was my fault. I didn't really think there was a need to come out and defend this, because I personally thought it was a no-brainer, once people got to read what it was. So that was my bad, for not showing up and defending my position on this. The town treasurer position was invoked for absolutely all of the right reasons, a hundred, two hundred years ago. But as, we could put a man on the moon, today, with a cellphone, rather than a room this big, full of computers, that still didn't have the juice that our cellphone has today, it's become a law, that is a little, and I don't say this to diminish what the position is, but it's a little antiquated, and, and it's, and it's kind of needs revamping. And part of the reason, I know I've been accused of not being able to articulate this, because I'm just saying, the election process. The election process is brutal. For a job that pays twenty-five hundred dollars, just like the town council, but opens you up to every vile comment, attack, and anything. Now, same as the budget committee, and you guys don't even get twenty-five hundred bucks. So, you know, I'm doing a lot better than all of you.
Just for point of clarification, counselor at large gets two thousand, not twenty-five hundreds of chair.
Oh, so I'm even making more money than you, whoa, that's a big deal then. I guess, my point is, and, so Justin, now I'm gonna turn it over to you. Please describe your, our department, the finance department, how many people, total cost, and what they do?
So, there is four people, five, including yourself, as the elected treasurer. The total cost of that is, I have it right here, so I might as well give you the real one. For just salaries, no benefits, no retirement FICA, it's four hundred forty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Okay, so, almost half a million?
Correct.
Okay, and how many people are in the, in the department?
There's four. Myself, controller, finance clerk, and the payroll finance coordinator.
And what is the town's operating budget, in total?
It is about forty-six, forty-eight million. However, we hold the funds for the school district, so we handle over a hundred million, a hundred million a year.
I kinda think, if I was in a huge corporation, I'd be kinda nervous of one elected people, person, in control of a hundred million dollars. And the, and that's what I'm trying to bring, the point is, it's not the wrong position to have, but the position has been outgrown, because of the, the size of the budget. One individual could not keep track of the books, on that kind of, that kind of money, that, the amount of transactions, all of that. So that's why we, as a town, as a municipality, decided to bring in a finance department, because we knew it was getting so large, one individual elected could not run all of the processes of keeping the town functioning, and paying its bills, and doing the process of the accounting department. And many of you probably know, in your business life, there are accounting departments. And we are no longer a town, a small town. We are a large town. There's a lot of money running through this town now. So I think that it is time, because the state gave us that ability, to remove this as an elected position. And it's not because I'm jumping for joy for it, but it's just time. Justin always makes the comment, that an eighteen-year-old could win, and, you know, come in and shut, shut down the finance department. That is a true statement, because technically, the treasurer still does have very limited financial, financial abilities, but all of the responsibility. And if you look at the RSA, that's the way it is, you know? I'm the one that's gonna get in trouble, if they're not doing their job. So, for someone to put themselves out on the line, first of all, in an election, and then put themselves out on a line, becoming the treasurer, is kind of a daunting task. And in today's world, when I looked at the London Dairy Lantern, and by the way, thank you for doing that, that's been such a nice addition, to get all the information regarding the town, I really appreciate being able to go to the website, and see up-to-date, current information about the town. The amount of positions that we're not getting anybody interested in, is kind of frightening. It's actually really frightening. And I think you're gonna see the same thing with the treasurer, because of just the nature of the election beast. When I ran, you have to pay money, you have to buy signs, you have to be held accountable, you gotta get your budget up to the state. Oh, I'm done.
No, I'm not, I'm not running a timer on, on the budget.
So, you know, it's not fun, getting up at four o'clock in the morning, after a snowstorm comes through, and put your, put your signs back up, and it's not fun, standing at the polls all day, except for, I have to disagree with that a little bit, because I like seeing everybody again, and it's a great opportunity to see a lot of people that you don't, excuse me, that you don't see. But I just think, the state made the opportunity for us to appoint, and they did it for a reason. So, we always say, London Dairy leads the way, well, we're not leading the way on this one. How many, how many communities?
Nineteen is what I have right now.
Nineteen communities appoint. Nineteen communities.
Comparable to our size?
Some are larger, some are our size, some are smaller, so it's, it's all over the board.
Okay. Appointing, you guys have more ability, you can do a background check, can't do a background check on me, and I can do any kind of crime I want, and not have to resign, because we saw that. Because I'm elected, so I'm protected, even though I might not, and should not, be holding office. But I'm an elected official, so I can do a pretty heinous crime, and keep my position. So, I'm just thinking that maybe it's time, that we reevaluate this, and go to an appointment for treasurer. I will disagree one hundred percent with you, Justin, and I'm sorry. And you know how I feel. I do not believe a town member should be, an existing town employee should be appointed as the treasurer, I believe it should be a citizen. And on a final note, John, you were absolutely right, in saying that I am the town treasurer, and I can pick anybody I want, as the assistant town treasurer, without any input from anybody. So think about that. I mean, I could call Richard and say, Richard, you want the job? And then resign, and guess what? You got Richard! But, but that's my point, and that's why I'm saying, it's, it's, it really is, it is a great position, it is, got beautiful historic standards to it, it is, it was warranted. I mean, it's hard for me, being such a history buff, and such a lover of the town, to be up here, asking, but it's time. It's time. And unfortunately, you know, I'm not trying to make waves, it's just, it just really is a good thing for us to, to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Perez, five Wesley Drive. Just for the record, for those watching, or those that are new to this process, did we not vote on this last year, as a town, and vote not to do this? Correct? Correct? Correct?
Do I have to give my name again? I'll do just like her. Daniel Bouchard, eight O'Connell Drive, five oh seven Mammoth Road, two King Edward, forty-five Buckingham, how's that? Okay? So, I guess, my question on this, and I, I'll tell you, I voted against this last time, okay? I understand Justin's concern. I don't know why anybody in their right mind would wanna take on this responsibility for twenty-five hundred dollars a year, I have no idea. Okay? Have you thought of how you're going to select this person? What kinda, what are you looking for? I guess, I'm looking for you to convince me, that this is gonna be a better process, by saying, all right, we're going to appoint somebody. But when we appoint somebody, they're gonna have to have A, B, C, D, you know, is what we're looking for.
Right.
All right?
Yeah, you have a criteria, right?
Criteria wishlist, it's, it's your choice on words there. Ideally, you look for somebody with an accounting background, finance background, that has experience in governmental accounting. I'll be honest, the town of London is very lucky, where we have a lot of residents that are governmental auditors, or work in other municipalities, as finance directors, town accountants, things of that nature. Ideally, I'd like one of them, because they fully understand the books. There's a difference between a corporate finance, and governmental finance. Assuming that we likely won't get those, because if one of the auditors does come, their firm won't be able to do the audit for the town, so we rule them out. The individuals for other municipalities may not want to, because they work in the same profession, in the same area. We also have individuals that have retired from those auditing firms, or have retired from municipalities, that could do it. Those, again, would be the top tier. After that, it would go, somebody with an accounting background, a finance background, CPA would be amazing. Around there, where we're able to go and verify that they understand how the financials actually work. And the one-year aspect allows us, where if they start deciding to walk me out, because as I've said, that's one of my concerns, is they can essentially say, the finance department has no ability to see any financial statements, we're taking you off as a signer, you're no longer allowed to look online at the statements. I would have no say. With that one year, it allows us to say, you, you can't do that. So those would be the ideal criteria.
Okay. I mean, you're also gonna do, Michael, a background check, right, on these individuals?
That's the intention, that we've received legal advice, that if the position involves the handling of money, that we can conduct the background check, and as I understand it, that is one of the primary reasons why we're pursuing this.
Okay, I don't know if there's a way to put that out there, that this is what you wanna do, and this is the criteria you're looking for, to try to convince people to do, to, to vote for it?
Great idea.
Because, because for me...
Great idea, we'll put it on the website, we'll put a criteria up, it's a great idea.
I mean, for me, that, you know, and listening to Justin, and this is what he's looking for, you know, you're gonna change my vote. But, you know, just to say, you're gonna appoint somebody, that doesn't convince me. But if you're gonna have a criteria out there, saying, you know, we're gonna look for, eh, this, this, and this, I think it's gonna help you.
We'll have it put together and put on the website, thank you for bringing it up.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Deb Paul, one eighteen Hardy Road. I am still against this. Mr. Bouchard brings out some good points. The one point I would like to say, is if we are gonna do this, it should be done in full transparency, so that person with the background check, I'm not sure how much that costs, the town to do, but that should all be done in the public, so that the people can see that. can see that and look at it, it shouldn't be handled the same way as a private employee is handled. My next question on this would be, is if we outsourced payroll, which would save some money, would it save some of the nervousness towards someone holding the town hostage? I don't know if that has actually been looked at thoroughly or just glazed at, but I do believe that outsourcing is a way to save money for the taxpayers, make your life a little easier. I do believe that it will also build a firewall and protect us if there's ever a mistake or, you know, you get audited and, you know, overtime wasn't calculated correctly, they're all responsible for it, and if they're not doing a good job, you can get rid of them. So I think that that should be looked at, I said that a while back, but I know you said that there were nineteen towns that are participating, correct?
Those are just the ones that I've reached out to.
I'm sorry?
Those are just the ones that have responded to my inquiries.
Okay. Well, I did a little research, too, there's 221 towns in the state of Hampshire, there was 237 municipalities, and I would say that over 50% of them are still elected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I can answer one of those questions, which is, have we looked at outsourcing payroll? As a matter of fact, yes, when Ms. Paul was on the town council, at her request, we investigated that, determined that it would actually be more expensive to outsource payroll, and that was communicated to then-councilor Paul.
Thank you.
Richard Polinsky, 8 Hall Road. Couple of things on this, I'm against it, I'll tell you that right out. The fact that you don't think you can get somebody that can handle this that isn't, you know, a degree or something, I think is foolishness. When I took, when I was town treasurer, there was no purchasing policy, the first thing I did was put a purchasing policy in place, look at when it was approved, and you'll see it's a year after I took over. We had no assistant treasurer in case something happened to them, I made sure that got taken care of because we hadn't had one for years, and the problem is if something happens to the treasurer, accounts payable don't get paid, payroll doesn't get paid, and a year into my term, due to a congenital issue I had, I had a heart attack, and I was out. Wasn't out long, one round of accounts payable and one round of payroll, but because I took the steps to get a treasurer and put him in place, an assistant treasurer, excuse me, this didn't happen. A little correction to what Kathy said, she's about 99% right, she does have the right to, the person would have the right to pick who they want as the assistant treasurer, but they have to be affirmed by the council. They just don't happen, they come to you, you have to affirm them. Unless the law has changed, last time I looked, it hadn't. And I can tell you, when I was the treasurer, I brought somebody forward and they fought me tooth and nails they didn't want them, and they had emails sent to me from different people that were in their little group, you know, "Would you consider me?" And if anybody thinks I'm lying, I still have the emails, and one from Troy Brown, who was, I believe, acting town manager at the time. So there can still be some influence. What happens if something happens to the treasurer and the assistant has to take over, and they don't have their degree or whatever it is? An honest person is an honest person. If you're going to get somebody in there that's going to steal from the town, they're going to do it regardless of what their education is or anything else. Last year, it was 999 to 800, that was the vote. Yeah, you have every right to bring it up this year, you can bring it up every year, unless you do a Warren article and it gets passed and it says, you know, "Do you agree not to revisit this for two years, three years, whatever it is?" So there's pros and cons to doing it both ways, so keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Kathy Wagner, again. I agree with Richard 100%, I know everybody's going to fall on the floor because we don't agree. Because we don't agree very often. I disagree with him on the treasurer part of keeping it. I can, it is a true statement that in today's world, with fraud running rampant and everything in banking that's going on, the treasurer could squeeze out the finance department if they were so minded to do so. Like he said, everything's integrity. To Representative Christine Perez, I can bring this up as many times as I want on this ballot, you have no say to tell me as a U.S. citizen and a citizen of Londonderry, I can't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further on the town treasurer?
One quick question.
Let's say that nobody ran for this position, and it was vacant, what would happen?
Two things, one is there could have been a write-in campaign, and then someone could be, you know, elected through a write-in campaign, or it would have to come to the council for appointment.
So you would have to appoint somebody anyway at that point?
Just like if we had a vacant position for Budget Committee or anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to point out, just because someone is honest doesn't make them competent in a position, and I think that's important to remember.
Okay. I'll accept the motion. Anything else?
One comment on this, I understand that you don't need to agree to do this, it's taxpayers' money, I've never said otherwise, you asked me what my wish list would be, and I think it's a fair assessment to say that somebody in charge of $100 million should have an accounting degree. You don't necessarily need to, like I said, to do it, but if you're asking me what I believe the criteria should be to manage, you know, even just our budget of $46 million, I don't think it's a crazy thought to have that as part of the criteria, and I don't think many people would be comfortable with me as a finance director if I didn't have a degree in accounting or didn't have a degree in business in any way. I think there would be a lot of questions if that was the case with me in my position, and I don't, I oversee, I take care of, I manage, I do all that, but this individual, this position, has the actual authority over the funds. And that's where it comes from, again, it doesn't necessarily need to be, I was asked what I believe the criteria should be, and I believe to manage this large sum of money, that should be part of the criteria.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one procedural point on this, as you know, the Budget Committee votes on items that have an appropriation attached to them or other, in other words, monetary items, this in the strictest sense is not a monetary item, however, it is a charter amendment, and so my recommendation would be that the Budget Committee does give a recommendation on this article.
Thank you. All right, I'll accept the motion to move this to deliberative.
So move. Second.
Wait.
Go ahead.
I just... Deb Paul, 118 Hardy Road. Mike, I never got the documents of proving or showing me that it was, and if you still have that available, I would like to see it, because I did not see it, I was just told it wasn't, and I asked for those documents and I never received them. I don't know who, I think it was Justin who actually told me that he got the document, so if you do have the documents about outsourcing it, I'd like to see it, maybe it should be put out publicly, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll accept the motion to, redo the motion, accept the motion to move the charter amendment to the deliberative.
So move. Second.
All who's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, I'm looking for a vote of recommendation of yes or no, those council members voting yes.
Can I make a comment first, John?
Of course.
Sure. So, Justin and Kathy, I respect both your opinions, I take it very, I take it dearly to my heart. I believe that whether this position is elected or appointed, that fraud can happen, either way. And I really believe in elections, so for me, I'm going to be voting no, because I'd like this position to remain elected. I firmly believe that whether it's elected or appointed, the same things can happen. So that's why I'd like to see it stay the same, so, but I do respect both your opinions, Kathy and Justin, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, those voting yes?
Aye.
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 Four yes, one no. All right, so Ron, Article III is yours.
Mr. Chairman, if you have a moment. So, if we want the Budget Committee to vote on this, does that require any, anything from the town council, like, does that need to be put forward or anything like that?
So in the past, what the Budget Committee has done is they've met separately and voted, I mean, if you want to vote now, I mean, I'll let you vote.
No, we're meeting Wednesday to vote, I'm just saying, if we're, usually we only vote on non-monetary items, so if we're...
In this particular case, being a charter amendment and regarding somebody who's handling the money, what he's recommending is, is that you vote on it.
And it should be noted that the Budget Committee voted on this last year as well.
Oh, we did?
Yes.
Oh, that's my mistake.
Yep.
Okay, Ron, Article III is your baby, so I'm going to, I'm going to announce it, and then I'm going to turn it over to you to read, and we'll go from there, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so Article III, loan authorization for High Range Road Water Supply Extension Project.
Absolutely done. So, this is going to need a 60% vote, so between myself and Mike, we're going to try our best to educate everybody on what is required for this. Basically, we are going to be asking the public for $2 million currently, it may be, it may be three, we're not sure, it may change, to run this extension all the way down to 102, so that we can get a bigger pipe, and eventually, with that waterline extension, extend it off to all the homes on High Range, this will start the process. This is a start, you know, but it's also a one-time shot at this $7 to $8 million. If we don't pass this, it will, money will not be there. It's a one-time chance for us to get this money. I believe that St. Albain, from the committees that I'm on, I believe that with this, they have more incentive to participate in this program, because this alleviates them of future responsibility. When we put in a poet system, they have to maintain that poet until that water tests, and where the levels are going to drop, from what I'm hearing, they're going to drop to four parts per trillion, this hopefully will incentivize them to also definitely participate in this program. So I would highly recommend, if anybody has any questions, please bring them up. Mike, if you want to add anything to it, I'd welcome your input also.
No, a couple of things, Councilor Dunn, I think you summed it up very nicely, I would just underscore that this is a fast-moving, you know, issue in New Hampshire, really nationally, and that's why, you know, there have been some changes to this article as it's moved through our process. That is based on, you know, weekly communication with DES at the highest levels, and, you know, forecasting what they think is available and how they think that, you know, we can put our best foot forward. The only other thing I will draw to everyone's attention is, the top line has gone up considerably since the last version of this Warren article that you reviewed, that is based on advice that we got from the Department of Revenue Administration, specifically that we need to gross appropriate for the entire project. That doesn't mean that we're raising $25.7 million, it just means that we have to show what the full project is, including our share, and that's, I think, beneficial because it does, you know, it was responsive to some comments, I think, that were made by the Budget Committee, isn't it possible to break this out and to show people really what the constituent parts are of this funding package? DRA is kind of in agreement with that and saying that's what you actually need to do. So, don't be alarmed by the big top number, this is a loan asking for authority to borrow up to $2.95 million through the PFAS Remediation Loan Fund or another similar program, but as we've seen before, authority to borrow doesn't mean that we will borrow, and so if we can do the project with a $2 million loan, then that's what we'll do, we don't take out a loan for $2.95 and then, you know, try to, you know, find another place for that money, we just don't take it out in the first place.
Or if another granting opportunity comes about, we'll go for the grant.
And then I'll also add the fact that the loan terms are very favorable to us, 1% during construction, 3.5% after, and you don't get better than that, so this is a one-shot deal, and if anybody has any concerns, please talk to me after, I'll tell you anything you would like to know about it, I think it's a really good thing for Londonderry, and it's really, it really is a one-shot deal.
Public hearing.
Does it need to be read in full, Mr. Chairman?
It will.
Okay, it will, okay.
I'm okay.
Richard Polinsky, 89 Hall Road. So Ron's saying $2 million, Mike's saying up to $2.95 million, which one is it? And when this, if we get this loan, is the town going to be doling this out on an ad need basis to Penetrack or whoever's doing this? We going to hand this over to them, and then we're at their mercy? Are we going to have any type of performance bond on this? I think we should have some solid numbers, because this is 2.95. He said 2.95. A public hearing said, a hearing on this said two, you said two, that's a million-dollar difference. You want to get this out to the people, maybe we should get the numbers straight? And are we going to be giving them the whole money, all the money upfront? If we do that, you know, it's kind of like Woodmont, when that went in, I told them to get some performance bonds on that, they didn't, now we hear about, "Why's it taking so long, it's a mess." Well, you would have been able to do it had you done what I suggested. So, those are just some of the questions, I might have had more, but since the draft didn't come out until today, and we couldn't look at it ahead of time, couldn't get prepared.
Mr. Chairman, to answer the... Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I can address a couple of those concerns or not.
Please feel free.
Yes, please. So, the number is straight, the number is 2.95, and I very, you know, I was very careful to say that that is, differs from what was presented earlier, and it differs based on advice and correspondence that we've had with the Department of Environmental Services, who's trying to assist us in putting our best foot forward during a time of significant uncertainty in the regulatory environment, as Counselor Dunn pointed out. We were expecting the standard to come down to four by the end of the year, that didn't happen. There are, there's roughly $89 million left in the Drinking and Groundwater Trust Fund, that needs to stretch over 20 years, and so some of the initial optimism about how much of that money might be available to Londonderry is maybe a little bit more restrained at this point in time. So, it would be a shame to have this article pass and to cover essentially all but $1 million of this $25 million project, if that were to occur, no project. And so out of an abundance of caution, we really took DES's advice, are asking the voters for a little bit more money, and yes, these are some of the, you know, the file, the paperwork, the documentation on these loans and on these projects, we did one with Lancaster Drive, you know, the paperwork was voluminous, there are performance bonds, the money is not handed over as a blank check, this has nothing, no similarity to Woodmont comments. That is how I would answer those concerns, Mr. Chairman.
So, can I add, the reason why we have to put $25,750,000 is because it runs through the town, so because it runs through the town, we have to gross appropriate it for it. If we were to just hand it over, we would only have to put that $2,950,000, because that's the only part that's coming through the town.
Why don't you read the full article, and then we'll go from there?
Article number three, "To see if the town will vote to raise to appropriate $25,750,000 for the purpose of partially funding the extension of Penetrack East Utility Public Water System main down the length of High Range Road to the vicinity of Route 102 in order to mitigate PFAS contamination and expand the availability of abundant, safe, clean drinking water to more of Londonderry's residents. Said sum shall be raised by the following means: Acceptance of funds from other sources to total a minimum of $20,800,000 for the sum that will complete such project. Funding sources may include, but are not limited to, State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Drinking Water Ground Trust Fund and other third-party sources. Urge, usage of $2 million from the funds received from the town through the American Rescue Plan Act. The issuance of the loan through New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services PFAS Remediation Loan Fund..." The issuance of the loan through New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services PFAS Remediation Loan Fund or similar program not to exceed 2.95 million under the compliance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act. And to authorize the Town Council to issue and negotiate such a loan, to determine the length of the loan, the rate, interest therein, and take such other actions as may be necessary to affect the loan. As such, be it the best interest of the town of Londonderry, and pass any vote relaying thereto. And further, to raise and appropriate the sum of $215,000 for the first annual principal and interest payment on the said $2.95 million loan. If passed, this article will require the town to raise $215,000 in property taxes, resulting in a tax rate impact of .034 in fiscal year '25, based upon projected assessed values.
Thank you. Yes.
Lynn Wiles, 46, Barley Hill Road. Good evening, members of the Town Council, members of the Budget Committee, Town staff. I'm the chairman of the Utilities Committee. The Utilities Committee was established by the Town Council in December of 2022 to advise the council, we're an advisory board, but to advise the council, the town manager and the town staff on a wide range of issues, including the safety and availability of clean and safe drinking water for the town of Londonderry. It is the position of the Utilities Committee that all Londonderry citizens, regardless of their address, have the right to access clean and safe drinking water. The Utilities Committee supports all efforts to provide clean and safe drinking water to the citizens of Londonderry, and we encourage, strongly encourage, the Town Council and the Budget Committee to support those efforts as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray Brezlin, 3 Gary Drive. First off, this is extremely important. We do have to move forward. We do need to take some steps. We do need to, I'm, I'm not personally against a Warren article that originally was put out that would be a loan for $2 million. Now, all of a sudden, we, we, this was brought out today, apparently, this is the first I've seen of it, okay? Now, what we need to be perfectly clear about is that this is an initial step to bring a 16-inch water line down High Range Road from Manchester Water, okay? So, and how far this is going to go, according to what Ron said here, this is going to go all the way down High Range Road to Route 102, okay? Now, who is going to pay for this? This is the question, okay? Now, the town, if they want to be serious, has to have something in the game. We have to prove that we're serious about it, about clean drinking water, and fire protection for that matter, in the town of Londonderry. And so we have to step up, and that's what we're talking about doing, okay? Now, $2 million, which was initially put out, is, is, is just, I, I'm fine with that, let's go with it, right? Now, and now it's changed a bit. And by the way, nothing is going to happen until St. Albans, in writing, says that they're going to come up with the money to get this done. Because the town of Londonderry is not going to pay that huge amount for the whole deal, okay? Obviously. There's no shovels going in the ground until this is clear. And, and with all due respect to what we're trying to present here to the general public, we have to be perfectly clear, because if we put out a figure and then it fails, we're kind of in trouble, okay? The town of Londonderry has already gone to the Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund, and we're denied. I know that because I go to the meetings, okay? Now, I'm not an expert on all of this, none of us are. But we have to make sure that if we're looking to get money from the state of New Hampshire, which is federal money, that they're distributing it out, and on top of that, most important, St. Albans, how much are they going to have in the game? Has anybody seen anything in writing that they're going to do anything more than provide bottled water to these people that are affected? Maybe they want to stick with that, maybe they don't. Now, if they sign off on this, and that, that gets them clear of the whole thing, and then they're out of it, maybe that is a good move for them. We really don't know. We need to know in legal. We need a document seeing exactly what St. Albans is going to do. Because nothing is going to happen, even if we pass this. And it's good that we can get this grant money at, at, at a reasonable rate of 1%. Absolutely, we should take advantage of that. But we do have to understand the really big picture. Because even if this 16-inch line, water line comes down High Range Road, there's nothing to say the pipes are going to go over to these people at these cul-de-sacs that are affected. That's not part of the deal, okay? And so we, okay, Weston Sampson did a very good report. I, I don't believe the town even paid for that, which is good, which is good. It was done well. And that sort of a vision as to what could happen throughout the whole town in the next 20 years. But none of this is going to happen all at once. Nothing's going to happen at all until St. Albans legally is bound to exactly what they're going to do. And we need to know that. Now, do I think the Warren article should go forward? Well, I'm, I'm a little bit amiff now because I'm, I'm not sure what the heck is going on. Initially, it was put out, it was going to be $2 million. Beautiful, you can get that, a, a nice loan, and, and we can say that the town has put some effort into that. But that's a loan that, well, I don't know how, how that's going to work out.
So Ray, what changed your mind today, what you were told?
Well.
Just specifically, because all that changed was the amount, the amount of the loan went up so that if we need more money, we have it, because we can't go back and change it afterwards, so.
And what if it doesn't?
We still might only need $2 million. But we're saying that if we need a little bit more, we want to ask for that now, we can always not take it and not take the loan.
And what if it doesn't pass?
If it doesn't pass?
Where are we at then?
Then we're nowhere.
Yeah.
We're screwed.
So.
We're screwed.
So that's why it's very important, I'm talking about this, I'm going to advocate for this for the next two months.
The conversations have been, and, and John and yourself and, and others have had conversations with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, and, and they're, they're sort of behind us. I mean, they're saying, yeah, you guys need to move forward, okay?
They're behind us 100%, I can say.
Well, 100%, but they, excuse me, but they haven't signed off on anything. Unless they receive something from the town that says that we have our plan, are, are we saying our plan is the Weston, the Weston Sampson plan?
So, so Ray, my belief is that if this passes, I believe that St. Albans will come forward.
Well, that's nice, you know.
Because, no, I'm going to tell you why I believe that, because if they come forward, they, once this is in, they don't have any future responsibility.
I, I heard you say that.
They're alleviated of that.
I heard you say that.
I know, so I think at some point, somebody has to make a step forward.
Well, we.
And even if we approve this, we don't have to take the loan.
Well, I think we, we should take the damn loan, but.
All right, so if you could just hold one second, I just asked the town manager to give us the breakdown on the numbers and where the dollars are coming from.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as we've, everybody is aware, the town has committed $2 million in ARPA funds to this project. That was a discussion that was had previously. We're asking for, for that loan for $2.95 million. There is a request, so the, the value of the St. Albans work is $13.1 million. And the balance is, will be our request either to the trust fund or some other source of funding through the state. And we're in active discussions to try to identify all those potential sources of funding.
So the, so the commissioner, who we met with, has promised to have his team come down here once we say we're putting this to the warrant.
Correct.
To come down here and do presentations here for the community to explain this project to the community prior to the vote on March 12th.
That's correct.
That is correct, that's what I also.
So that, that, that's how we're going about this.
And, and Mr. Chairman, can I just?
Please.
Respond to one factual assertion that was, that was, is true, but it's, it's only half of, of the, the story, which is that we applied to DES and we were denied. We, we made a, a, an application to DES as part of the normal round of funding requests through the Drinking and Groundwater Trust Fund. And DES kicked this off into consideration as a special project. It really is a special project, because we're dealing with mitigating contamination. There was the thinking that perhaps the pieces would fall into place in time for an award to be made during the normal funding schedule. That has not occurred, because as I've repeatedly said tonight, this is a fast-moving process. There, we, we don't have all of the facts. We don't have all of the certainty, but we're doing the best that we can so that we don't have to wait for another election cycle if and when the pieces do fall into place. So I know that it's unsatisfactory to some people to see Warren articles changed throughout the process. I think we were fortunate enough that our process was still open here, that we were able to respond to new information. That is all that has happened.
So the new information is, is that DES has advised us, based on the cost estimates that they have, that if we continued forward with what we had now, we would be short funds.
Correct.
Correct.
So they're, they're, what they said to us was is, add this into your additional loan. You may or may not need it, but in case you do need it, you can't go back and have another vote.
That is exactly correct, Mr. Chairman. And actually, I had a conversation with Secretary of Transportation Buttigieg this morning, who told me that what he is seeing is costs are starting to stabilize. And so these large construction requests, these large construction projects, what we're actually starting to see is the need for less money than was committed, less money than was appropriated. So I think something along those lines is very possible, possibly what's going to happen here.
Does that help with your questions?
Which question was that?
Well, you, you, you had many, so I was trying to see if I could get you some answers.
Okay, look, look, I, I'm trying to be respectful here too, but.
I understand, so am I.
So, so, look, I personally go to these meetings because I can. Now, I think some more people from the town of Londonderry should be going to these meetings, okay? And the way I understand it is, and they, they've told us this many times, if you want to get money for, for a water fund like this here, you need to put in for grant money, and you need to put in for a, a loan, okay?
Yes.
And it should be about 50/50, okay? And so at this point, have we, other than this ARCA one that the town manager mentioned, have we put in for a grant in addition to the loan? That's my question.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The grant application was what was submitted to the Drinking and Groundwater Trust Fund, asking for, I think, in the neighborhood of $10 million. Our forthcoming application will be for a grant in the neighborhood of $7.3 million. So the 50/50 scenario that Mr. Brezlin set forth, that's correct. But we're, we're putting forward a, a project that is asking for significantly more grant than, than 50/50. So I, that's not in the normal course. And I would just point out that, you know, it is the case that DES is behind us.
I did the math on it, and 11, we're paying 11.4% of the total cost if we do the 2.95 million.
Correct.
So if we're only paying 11, 89% of the costs are covered by somebody else, and it's not a burden on the taxpayers.
See, Ray, we, Ron and I were asked to go to the commissioner's office. We met in his office with his staff. This was the process they recommended for us to follow. So that's the process we're following, because that's what they recommended, that they could get approved and would be financially the best for Londonderry.
But with all due respect, they did not guarantee, guarantee to you.
Death and taxes.
That they could get that done.
Death and taxes, that's all that's guaranteed.
If they did say that, I, I would suggest, because he, he's not the only one that votes on that, okay?
I, I, like Ron, I believe we've done everything that we've been able to do to put us in the best position to win here. And that's what we're doing.
Okay, just, just one other thing before I leave here, that you, we need to be clear on, that we're, we're eventually going to have, to have municipal water throughout the town of Londonderry because we have a lot of contamination in the ground and in the groundwater. It's not going away, okay? It's not going to happen overnight. We're probably talking a 30-year program here to get all this done. And, and this, what we're talking about this money here, we seem to be talking about St. Albans and a water line coming down High Range Road. It's much bigger than that, okay? Even if we get the line coming down High Range Road, we still get to get it over to these other people in, west of High Range Road that are impacted, and not only that, to the other people to the east also.
Correct, Ray, but it's a small step. It's a step in the right direction, we have to start somewhere.
Absolutely.
That's what I'm saying, we, we got to start somewhere. This is an opportunity for us to start somewhere and not cost the town a lot of money.
My concern is that if this does not pass, because they look at it and say, oh, 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 we, no, we can't afford this, we're even further behind the ball.
But Ray, we have to try. We have, we have to go to the voters and see how they feel. The last, the last Warren article that we put on, the voters said they were in favor of doing something, so.
Non-binding.
It was, Ray, but they said they were in favor, so let's, you know, I'm, I'm willing to take the chance, Ray.
Absolutely, I want to do something.
I mean, I've done a lot of work on this, Ray, and I'm willing to take the chance. I think I can get the message out to the voters.
I appreciate what all of you are doing.
And we can, we can make this pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Ray.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Of course.
I'm not sure about this, so, so you would know. Do the ARPA funds expire in August or September so that we have to use them by 2024?
So, and I'll defer to the Finance Director, but my understanding is the ARPA funds that we have, that we have taken in, that were awarded to the municipality, need to be obligated by October of 2024.
December.
December, by the end of 2024. They need to be expended by the end of 2020.
We've had six.
Six.
But they have to be obligated, it has to be clear what it is for. And let's say this project, we, we go forward with it, the project goes forward, and all of a sudden it changes from High Range to Hardy Road, then we lose those funds. It, it, you can't change what the obligation is for. You can change the vendor, but it has to be the exact same project.
So the ARPA dollars would be the first dollars in for that reason? Because our, we don't have that limitation on, or we wouldn't have that limitation on the other sources of project funding.
Okay, thank you.
Martha Smith, 38, Chester Drive. I have a couple of questions. First of all, Ron, why is this a one-time deal?
In my opinion, it's a one-time deal, because I don't think the, the funds will be there.
Okay, so you think that the, that the fund that has, would.
The fund that we've applied for, if, if we don't, if we don't use it, another town will take advantage of it.
Another town, okay. And, okay, that, that was, that was my biggest question, that.
Thank you.
You, you're afraid that the fund is, is going to dissipate.
And I appreciate your support, thank you.
Okay.
Deb Paul, 118 Hardy Road. As all of you know, I've been, you know, probably, next to Ray, one of the biggest cheerleaders in this town for water, starting the Citizens for Clean Water, being involved in the Committee for Ground Drinking Water. I go there every single month, I sit up in Conquid, and I talk to these people. I've sat with Mike and Lisa Drabek many, many times. I told them what was needed to move forward with funds. Nobody has ever acted on these things, and Ray is absolutely right, we have no plan. Who is going to run our water system? Are we going to do what Hudson did? Bring it in-house, outsource it so they didn't have to bring on employees? Are you going to give it all to Penachucke? Are you going to be a, a mishmash of different types of water throughout the town? town? You need to have that all in place. You need to look at where water is coming from main lines, from all around our town, where the pumping stations are. Then you look at High Range Road. And yes, if St. Obane doesn't opt in, this isn't going to happen. Talking to Amy Russo, who's the head of this fund, who pushed and worked really, really hard to get your loan for you, told me it's going to be more to the tune of $3 million. And that was yesterday on the phone. So as someone who is for water, I don't see a Plan A, I don't see a Plan B, I don't see an overall plan. The reason we didn't get our water that last time, that when the box, the form that came into the committee, it said, how many people did this service? It said zero. It was a mistake, I guess. Then it said it went by 360 people's houses, but it never said that it was going to service those people's houses. So what Penachuck, what they wanted to see is that people were going to opt in to get water because they want to make money back, you know what I mean? So that didn't happen. And the other part of the reason why you got the no was because you didn't have a loan in there, which was a part, you know, to show that you had skin in the game. These loans you can get, and then you can file, and you can get an abatement for them for almost 75%. We granted just last month eight towns money. Towns that don't even have PFOAs issues because they had their stuff ready, they'd been moving it in phases. This has been going, this isn't new. This has been going on for at least six years. And we should have our act together. And I'm sorry, we don't. And that's one of the biggest issues. And normally I'd be for this. And I'd be for this if you had a plan. You think about it, it's going down High Range Road. You have all these off branches. What is a for-profit company like Penachuck East want? They want people hooking up. Will the state give them $10,000 to hook up to the water? Yeah. Is that pennies on the dollar to run a line up your driveway if you're really far from the road? Yes, it is. So that, that's part of it. And the only reason Penachuck East did not apply for this grant themselves or this loan themselves is because they didn't see it as necessary in their business plan. So that tells me that there's been no communication talking to Penachuck, or very little, as to, we want you, or we want to work with you, or anything like that, because if they felt that way, they would have put us in their business plan. And if they were, if we were in their business plan, they would have been the ones getting the loan. So that is really important to understand. And so if you're running this pipe down Mammoth, excuse me, High Range Road, you have all these little offsets, east and west, going into little neighborhoods. Something in my mind is, is you take a portion, take so many, go off into those little cul-de-sacs, see what that's going, because now you're going to, you don't even have that. You know, we're going to put it in, and then we're going to dig up the road again to connect to these other things, which is going to cost even more money. There's, to me, this is a great thing. And, and Ron, not to pop your bubble, that money is not disappearing. There is a lot of money there. It is not going away. And these grants that we're giving out, Ry just got $23 million for upping their pumping station and some of their pipes that were antiquated. So it's there. It's not going anywhere. But they're cautious and, and good stewards of the dollar. And they want to make sure that everything's in place, that the town's got their, their game face on and they're ready to get in and do the work. And that's what needs to happen in this town. So I am really sad to say, as someone who has been a big proponent of water, I mean, heck, I started the utility committee for the water and for solar. And I can't, I can't support this because we don't have a plan. And if we do have a plan, I really would like to see it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond to a couple of those statements?
Feel free.
So I know Counselor Paul, former Counselor Paul's been off the council for a while. So it could, it could be that she's just unaware of all of the hard work that we've, that we've been doing. But I, but I, I think that anybody who's been on the town council in the last, certainly since I took over, even since I worked on this issue as the Assistant Town Solicitor, knows that the assertions that Lisa Drebek and I didn't follow up on anything, and that we don't have our act together, are just false. I also want to just correct Ms. Paul. She said that Penachuck, or Penachuck East Utility is a for-profit company. That is not correct. It is not a for-profit company. It is a regulated utility, and that comes with certain restrictions that do not make it a for-profit company. It was suggested that, well, you know, she's not aware of us speaking to Penachuck East, so we must not be speaking to Penachuck East. I took the whole team over at, at the end of last year to meet with Penachuck, their CEO, their Director of Water, pretty much their whole senior leadership team. I had a Zoom with them about two months ago to talk about all of these issues. And I spoke with their council just last week. So I think that it's tempting to take the absence of information or silence and assume that nothing is happening, but nothing could be further from the truth.
Yes, name and address, please.
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive. I get my water. I don't have a well. I'm one of the, I'll say lucky people, but my water bills are outrageous. I mean, I have incredibly high water bills. Those of us that are serviced by Penachuck have outrageous bills. You need, and I believe that people need to have clean water, and I believe the issue needs to be addressed. I support this because of it. I know that we did not get money a couple of years ago from the state because we did not have a plan at that time. And I remember one of the elected officials at a meeting saying, oh, we're going to get this money, and then finding out we did not get that money because there was no plan in place. I don't remember whether that was two or three years ago. You need to market this hard, 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 to the people who already get water. There are a lot of us. And if you think you're going to just be able to put this forward without marketing it to them and have them vote for it, and it's a lot of people who now are on Penachuck water, they will not vote for it because, they might not vote for it because your water bills are so high. This is just, as far as they may be concerned, not me, it's paying for somebody else's problem. And I hate to have it sound that way, but that's the way it may come across. So your marketing has to be, I mean, if Penachuck could come out and say, you get 10,000 more people on water, your water bills will go down, that would be great because our water bills are outrageous and they just applied to raise them again. So we just got a letter that they're being raised. So marketing this is going to be a huge thing. And you might even want to, I mean, I go and speak before my community on things that are coming up. You also may want to speak before some of the communities that have water and say why this is good for them. And then the other thing, people who don't, who do have wells and have systems that are protecting them at this point, they may not want to go along with this because right now their water bills are very low. And with Penachuck water bills, they may not want to buy it. So the marketing of this is going to be a huge factor. And as much as you may knock the paper that comes out every week, that's what us old people read. We have the time. We sit down and read the paper.
Christine.
Real quick.
I'm sorry.
So Christine brings up a good point about the marketing and, and education. I think those are very valid points.
Huge, huge.
I do also think that we have really good people in this community. For example, Century Village, that was a water project that the community voted in favor to pay to save the water, the drinking water for that small, that small community that.
I understand that. But right, that was, that was a while ago. And right now, things are very, very different than they were when that happened. We are in an economy that is very, very different. And we have a huge amount of fixed income seniors that live in this community, okay, who, you just got to market it. And I'm not just saying to the seniors, I'm saying to the people who are on wells, who have remediation systems, and why would I want to hook up and have to pay the exorbitant prices for water that Penachuck's charges when I'm trying the way I am? So I just say marketing is going to be a huge thing for you to get this passed. I'm in favor. People deserve to have clean water, so.
Mr. Chairman, very, very briefly, if I can, not to respond to anything Representative Perez said, but actually to amplify.
I'm here as a citizen.
Ms. Perez, she's correct that there is a pending rate petition that Penachuck has filed. She's also correct that I, I hear from folks who, who think that their water bills are, you know, much too high. I think it is the case that Penachuck's corporate structure probably does affect their ability to control their rates. But I'm, I'm, I would also report that they have a, a alternative rate petition that would consolidate their corporate entities into one corporate entity, which would bring the, the promise of hopefully better, better rates over time, the ability to control those rates. So she's, she's correct about that, but I, I just wanted to point out that there is that rate petition that's also pending that would have the opposite effect.
And just to follow up on that, Penachuck had to put in this petition because of timing.
Correct.
But the first petition they want to put in is to combine the three companies.
That's correct.
Just for the record, so.
I, I need to correct a few things here. Number one, it's been less than a year.
Just name the address, please.
Deb Paul, 118 Hardy Road.
Thank you, Ms. Perez.
It's been less than a year that I've been off the council. And I always ask Ron, actually, as a counselor, for the water plan. And he says he hasn't seen it. So I would love to see it, Mike, if you could send it and share it to everyone, that would be fantastic. Century Village was denied again. They do not have clean, you're thinking about across the pond, down in.
Behind Shaw's.
Wayne Castle.
Thank you.
Thank you for correcting me.
Because they still don't have anything because they're HOA people, which they spend like 900 bucks on HOA, which is crazy, still hasn't put anything together. They're trying to work with the ground drinking water people to get clean drinking water to them, but they have not. They were denied.
Thank you. You're, you're right.
They came in the same time that the town did. And I just wanted to say that. But, you know, I'm not saying the people aren't working due diligently, but I think that there's more that could be done. And I think we should take advantage of citizens like myself, like Ray, like Martha, that want to write these things for you and get it done. And then you guys can look at it. And so we can move it forward in the most positive, cost-effective fashion possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Smith, 38 Chester Drive. It seems as though our water plan now has become this, this deal because St. Obane was blamed for everything that was west on High Range. Now, this has become the Londonderry Town Water Plan. I think, and, and I think that anywhere we can start is good. I do agree with that. But I think that we need an overall Plan B that, that discusses this. I think Christine made some good points about selling this to, there's a lot of pockets around town that have public water already. And some are on Manchester water from Lake Massabeesik, some are on Penachuck. It would be better if we could all be on one system. I don't know if that can happen. I don't know if the town has any leverage with the PUC to say, we want all Manchester water. They have lower rates. But this warrant article really made me nervous when I looked at it because I thought that we were talking about this loan that was going to be $2 million, so now it might be $3 million. That's something that I think the citizens of Londonderry might be able to swallow for water. But to look at this, the way it's written, and Justin says it has to be written that way, it's really scary because what pops out at you right in the beginning is this huge, huge number. We also on the ballot this time, not, not in the town ballot, but on the school side, we have another huge number there that, that I'm really afraid that even though this is the way to go, to get this, this loan at this time, I'm really afraid that this whole thing could be shot down because of the way this question is written. I, I would love to know if it would be, there'd be any way to rework it so, so that that, so it'd be really clear that what we're asking for right now to go toward a future project is $3 million, so 2.95.
Martha, I agree with you. We actually, we had that conversation and.
I agree with you. That's the first thing I saw. But I, I've been told that that's the way it has to be written, and I defer to Justin. But I, that's the way I've been told it has to be written this way.
Yeah. To be honest, my, my concern was that $25 million, then $20 million, then $2 million, then 2.9 million, and then $215,000. I was concerned people are going to go see it and say, well, wait a minute, how much is this actually going to cost us?
Right.
The problem is with municipal accounting and the way that our state runs the laws with this, we have to gross appropriate for the entire thing. We have to, if it's coming through our books and we're not just taking that $3 million and handing it off to somebody else, we have to account for all $25 million that will be coming in and going out. We can't just put $3 million because then we'll have appropriations of $22 million that we don't have the budget for essentially. Because what this does is it's accepting the funds here for the $25 million. So if you were to look at it on a balance sheet, you'll see the expense of 25, 965, because it's the payment as well, plus 25, and then revenues of all but the $2,950,000, which leads you with the tax impact of the 215. But you have to account for both the revenues and the expenses, and that's why you have to put that $25 million in there. I went back and forth with DRA on this one, and I lost very hard. Because it, it makes sense when you look at it from the Municipal Budgeting Act, the Municipal Finance Act, the way that you have to gross appropriate. That was a concern. I'll be honest, my bigger concern too was the other ones on there. And I said, well, can we just put, this is what it is, we're accepting funds from elsewhere. And they said, no, you have to break it out. Which is why we've mentioned St. Obane is one of the things. If you look, I put other third-party sources.
Right.
In case we're able to get it from somewhere else, we're not handcuffed to just St. Obane.
Just St. Obane. Now I can understand.
This is, out of all the warrant articles, I'd say this is the one I spent the most time on with the phone with DRA.
Yeah.
It's, I, I don't disagree with you. To be honest, I'm more scared of the other numbers in there as well, because if you don't read it closely, you're going to think all this, and it's, well, wait a minute, we only said, you know, $3 million. Where's all this coming from?
Right.
But if you look at the bottom, it is only the 215 that we're actually looking to raise and appropriate.
Yeah, I wish that was on the top.
Yeah.
I do too.
Thank you, Martha.
And I, I can keep going back. I'll, I have a call-in to DRA to see if there's a way we can try to do that. But like I said, I already have gone back and forth a couple times with them, and unfortunately, that's one I lost pretty bad.
Okay. We're going to bring this back to the council, so let's.
I just, one question to Justin, because of what I heard at, Deb Paul, 118 Hardy Road. When I was talking to Amy Russo about the loan, and she said that you were, and you said you had to justify that it was paying somebody, wouldn't we be paying Penachuck East to do the work? Wouldn't we be contracting them to put in that pipeline so therefore they wouldn't have to do that?
That hasn't been decided yet, Mr. Chairman.
That's not necessarily the case.
I just was trying to think about how to take those numbers out.
So, no, I, I get what you're saying, but essentially, if, I don't think Amy, I haven't talked with Amy, whether or not she'll send the money directly to them, but it sounds like it has to come to us to go to them, and that's where.
Right. If you say that that's who you're paying.
Okay.
Because it's coming through our.
Justin, go back here. Last comment.
I just want, I just want some, a little explanation on this, okay? If St. Obane, let's say this got voted down, Ron, and St. Obane decided to put their water line through. They would put a smaller water line, correct? So what we're looking to do.
Or they would do poets.
What's that?
Or they would do poets.
Okay. So what we're looking to do is to jump on this, put a bigger line in, okay? And I think this is the education you have to do, okay? I mean, being in construction, it's very simple, all right? If I put in a eight-inch line, because that's going to be sufficient to take care of this problem and walk away. Or now the town's looking at it and saying, all right, how about if we put a 16-inch line down the road? We don't have to tear up the road again. We don't have to pave the road again. We don't have to inconvenience all these people on traffic, all right? And now we can shoot off, off this line, okay? It's easy to say. It's easy to say to people, you know what, people on wells might not vote for this, all right? But let me tell you, there's a big cost to a well, all right? If you have to drill a well, you're looking at at least $15,000, people, all right? It's not going to, you know, water is not free that you have in the ground, okay? You're paying for these water systems. These water systems backwash and stuff, and they're using more water, all right, which, you know, there's a lot of education I think you need to do. I fully understand what you're talking about, all right? And I understand also the people's concern about Penachuck and Manchester Water, all right? 507 Mammoth Road is Manchester Water. Buckingham, Penachuck, pay a lot more at Penachuck than I do through Manchester Water, all right? And I can understand people's frustration through that. But that's something down the road that you have to look at, and I understand what you're looking at for this money, you're looking at if they put in this water line, let's jump on this, let's save the town money down the road. Thank you.
Correct, Dan, thank you.
I'm right on that one?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Education, you're going to have to spell it out like that.
I will be out there for the next two months, educating everybody.
Yes, sir.
Glenn Douglas, 601 Ave. I've just got a question because I'm kind of confused. We have two public hearings, the second one is talking about a loan pertaining to extension of, are these combined, or is there something after?
I don't understand.
He's asking.
Oh, it's the bond hearing, Mr. Chairman. So the council's going to have to act on this matter under the bond hearing. Free to discuss it, debate it, deliberate it now.
The bond hearing?
Correct. I wouldn't move it to, in other words, I would advise against moving it to the warrant until we conduct the bond hearing.
Yeah, fine.
Which is immediately following. I think that answers the question.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if these were something different. The only other thing I really want to say is, we're on number three, I think there's nine. We found a million-dollar change, I understand that. When did everyone get copies of this? Because I think Ron started and said 2 million, and it's actually 3. Did you guys get a copy of what we're actually discussing? Because when I asked, I was told, well, the warrant's not finalized until tonight, and when it's finalized, we'll send a copy out to the public. So the people sitting out here and at home don't have the ability to read any of this. We don't have the ability to say, hey, I'm concerned about number eight, because the people at home, they don't know what number eight is. This should have been sent out earlier. The school district sent it out yesterday, maybe the day before.
So, Mr. Chairman, as you know, there is a very tight timeline between when, the deadline for citizens' petitions closes and when we have to finalize this and present it to the town council and the budget committee. We have done a better job this year than ever before getting these documents to the budget committee and the town council, and I would add, including the public in that. We got six citizens' petitions this time?
Correct.
Each of them had to be transcribed, typed, word for word, sentence by sentence, to make sure that they were precisely correct. Justin and I were working on the bond article, going back and forth with DRA until last evening. I sent this, because I was still working on it, to all of the parties at something like 9 o'clock last night, is my memory. So is it ideal? No, but I would suggest to you that that is a problem with the budget calendar that the state sets, and the sheer number of citizens' petitions that we got on this occasion, having to verify the signatures, that also factored into the timeframe here.
But you couldn't put this out publicly so that people at home, or people that were wondering if they even want to come, could look at it?
Mr. Chairman, all of the articles have been noticed. There was a newspaper publication telling everybody what the articles are. There have been minimal changes to most of these articles. There was Facebook and website notification. So I'm always, you know, can we always do a better job communicating and with the public? Sure. But I think that we've done a decent job to date.
I just wanted to say real quick, Ms. Paul, thank you for the accountability. I misspoke, I was talking about Lancaster Drive, that was specifically what I was talking about. Thank you, though.
Okay, you had a question?
Yes, my question is, if this doesn't get voted, do we lose the $2 million through the American Rescue Plan Act? And if we're not losing it, what are we, what's the future plans with that $2 million? How does that get appropriated and determined where it goes?
So as they stated earlier, we'll have to obligate it by December of 2024, so we'll have to come up with another way to use it. I don't want to use an example because someone will say that I said the money's going to be used for that.
Correct, yes, okay.
So, but it's, but we would have to obligate it to something else.
Would the town council vote on that, or would we have to have like a special election to?
The town council votes on the American Rescue Funds.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. Next article. Well, I'm not moving it anywhere yet until I do the bond.
Correct.
Next article, Article Four. Fiscal Year 2025 Town Operating Budget. Shall the town raise and appropriate an operating budget not including appropriations by special warrants and other appropriations voted separately? The amounts set forth on the budget posted on the warrant or amended as a vote in the first session for the purposes forth therein totaling $45,859,596. Should this article be defeated, the default budget of $45,901,242,000, which is the amount of the appropriations contained in the operating budgets authorized from the previous fiscal year. With certain adjustments required by previous section, previous action of the town or by law or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:1310 and 16 to take up the issue of revising the operating budget. If passed, this article requires the town to raise $23,653,283,283 in property taxes of a tax rate of 3.696 for fiscal year 25. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the budget committee? Any questions from the public? Seeing none.
Can I, since there were adjustments, I just want to let everyone know what happened, if that's okay?
Sure.
So, this was updated, I believe I sent you all the copy earlier today with the final selections we had, and if you look, the operating budget decreased by $171,841, where the default budget decreased by $360,580. The reason for that is we went from having 20 open positions down to 13, and those individuals have made their elections on health insurance, dental insurance, so I wanted to make sure we got those in there to make sure that we were taxing at the correct level and not overtaxing in that aspect. So I allocated it based on what we currently have available, or what our current staffing is, the open positions, and made that. In addition to that, you will see that the cable revenue decreased. I had included the future, the warrant article we'll talk about later in terms of the cable, if you look, it's 32,500. That was accidentally included in there. The only other thing is, I exchanged emails with Maureen, and she recommended some adjustments in the management services, so I looked at my budget and moved some of it to a more appropriate line. Thank you for those suggestions.
Thank you, Justin.
And the other ones, like I said to you, we will look at working into next year's budget to try and make it more easy for everybody, or more understandable for everybody and put it in the appropriate places.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a copy of warrant articles, except it didn't have any figures on it, or very few, and now we have updated figure, which is 45 million and change, which does not include warrant articles that may be passed, which.
Correct, this is just the operating budget.
Do we know what the total of all the warrants, if they were to pass?
That is, if you look, there should be a.
It's like $6 million, isn't it?
The total? So, wait.
No, you tell me.
I guess I'm not sure I understand what you mean in terms of.
All warrant articles that are in there that require money, tax money.
You're looking at a tax, so what we would raise through taxation, including the veterans' exemption, the Taxpayer Relief Act, minus 200, and then an overlay of 171,000?
Yeah, I haven't.
You're looking at a total of.
I don't even have the figures on those.
You're looking at a total of 27,42,330.
In warrant articles?
If everything passes.
I think it's roughly 3.5 million excluding the budget, Justin?
I believe so.
Yeah, so we're only talking about the operating budget now, we'll talk about each.
Did you say 27 million?
That's for all the warrant articles.
Excuse me, we're only talking about the operating budget now, okay? We'll talk about each one of the warrant articles. The question is, is if all warrant articles pass, what will the tax rate be?
If all warrant articles pass, and including net, the overlay, the 200,000 from UFB to lower the tax rate from the 2019.
As presented right now.
And the veterans exemption, you'd be looking at $4, $4.22.5.
Okay.
Well, look, we're all working together here, even though sometimes it doesn't seem that way, but.
But we can only discuss one thing at a time, sir.
I'm discussing, are we discussing the budget?
The operating budget, yes.
Operating budget.
Yes.
Not including warrant articles.
Yes, sir.
Are we including warrant articles? Okay.
Those will be talked about.
You're asking what the number is, including the warrant articles. We're only talking about the operating budget. We're going to talk about each of the individual warrant articles as we go forward.
Yeah, but I think it's important for the general public to understand that the budget is one thing that they have to deal with, and we haven't seen the $45 million figure before this evening, they haven't seen it either.
Well, we have been discussing it for quite some time now.
No, that 45 million has been around since November 4th.
Oh, it has.
Absolutely.
I stand corrected.
Okay.
Okay, it's just.
It's, well, the 45 million hasn't, it's been around, it's changed based on personnel hires, insurance, other aspects, that's.
I thought it was more like 42 million, but at one point it was.
So it's 40 million for the general fund operating, and then 5.7 for the sewer. The sewer is offset by 5.7 in revenue.
Sewer's paid toward by.
Yes, but again, going back to gross appropriation, we have to account for it.
Yes.
We need to continue on, thank you.
Thank you.
Just some clarification, John.
Whatever the is, yes.
On the operating budget, when we hire more personnel, all right, and we add to the budget, that increases the default budget for next year, correct?
Yeah, which, by the way, I hate default budgets.
I know you, I know you do, okay? But I just want to make that clear, because.
If it had been up to me, we never would have gone to SB 2 and done a default budget.
But the default budget.
I was over, I was voted over on that.
The default budget continually grows as we pass everything and increase everything.
It's the worst piece of legislation ever written in the state.
Yes and no.
How do you really feel?
Yes and no on that one, so everybody's clear, so.
It takes local control away.
So if you look at like the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund, the Capital Reserve requests, pickleball courts, those.
Those don't increase the budget.
Those don't increase default, those are a one-time approval, and that's why you see them every year, why we ask for them every year, because it's, we have to get approval every year for them. But, yes, the personnel would be increasing default. I just wanted to make sure that was.
All right, so on the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund, can you just roughly, I don't want to detail, roughly, what does that cover? Just a rough, Justin.
So.
So when people look at that Maintenance Trust Fund.
So an example would be the library roof. We just replaced that, got it fixed. It covered that.
So if we needed work done at the Lions Hall, that Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund would help cover that?
It could.
It could, because it's a town building.
It's a town building. Or if we had to, if we had to fix the, if we had a problem with the bathrooms at the senior center, or anything along those lines, or if we had a major leak here, you know, that wasn't covered by insurance, anything along those lines.
Okay, I just want that cleared up, because I know years past, all right, if it was like fire department, they had their budget, they had to cover all that stuff. Now it's changed, so we have the Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund to cover those repairs.
The larger repairs.
Yeah, we tried to get it to cost more predictable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no one else seeing none, I will accept the motion to move the operating budget to the deliberative session.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Council, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's like five? Article Five, Expendable Maintenance Trust. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $200,000 to be placed in the town's Expendable Maintenance Trust Fund for the purpose of repairing and maintaining town facilities and infrastructure to further authorize the use of $100,000 from the June 30th undesignated fund balance towards this appropriation. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the budget committee? Any questions from the public?
Christine Perez, 5 Wesley Drive, how much money is in that account now?
Look at that, I was pulling it out for you. Currently, there is 269,733, but I believe there are still some pending projects out there, if I'm correct, Dave.
So I learned the other day that when the school budget does this, they've, when they ask for money to go into a trust fund like this, they've already got it all spent. I mean, not all spent, but they've got it all put out exactly what this being spent on. That's not what is done, this, you all don't do it that way.
We don't operate in that fashion.
No, okay, that's just what I wondered. So if you get 200 and you maybe have 150 left, okay, you have 350, right? And that's not earmarked for anything.
No, and the following year, we may not ask for any money.
Right.
Which has happened.
Right, but if something else didn't pass and you wanted to use it for that on a building.
It would have to be a repair of the building.
Repair.
But like, I'm trying to think of an example right now, let's say.
Floor in the Lions Building.
We, that was used previously for that.
Okay, thank you.
Going though, if we were to do Lions Hall, and we were to say we want to repair the roof at Lions Hall on the warrant article, on a different warrant article, and it fails, we can't use this to go repair that roof, because no means no, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Can I speak to that, Mr. Chair?
Sure, of course.
So to clarify the school side of things, if I may, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Slater, the Buildings and Grounds Trust Fund that the school has, yes, during the budget process, to discuss the potential projects that are coming up this year for that money, but that money is not earmarked for those projects on the warrant article. The warrant article just says, we're putting money in the Buildings and Grounds Fund. Agreed, Mr. Slater? Right, but that breakout is not on the warrant, it's just in the discussion during the budget process.
Correct.
Good to know.
Let's leave the school over at the school.
So with this, it's a born to keep in mind too, that it's, we, I say we, Dave monitors the buildings to determine what needs to be done, because we don't want to catch things at the last minute, because you can do it cheaper when you get ahead of it. However, the old expression, everyone has a plan until you get punched in the face. Things happen, you got to fix it. And that's what this goes to, as well as the plan of trying to make the, keep repairs up to date.
I'll accept the motion, move this to the deliberative.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those councils in favor, say aye.
Aye.
5-0. Article Six, Roadway Maintenance Trust. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $650,000 to place in the roadway maintenance expendable trust fund. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the budget committee? Any questions from the public?
There is.
I'll accept a motion to move this to deliberative.
So moved.
So. Second.
Seconds.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. Counselors voting yes?
Aye.
Aye.
5-0. Article seven, to establish the funding municipal separate storm, um, storm sewer system expendable, um, trust fund. To see if the town will vote to establish the municipal sep- uh, separate storm trust system, MS four, expendable trust fund per RSA thirty-one colon nineteen dash A, to assist the funding of the town obligations as mandated by the Clean Water Act and other, um, laws or regulations to develop and maintain comprehensive storm water management, and to raise an appropriate one-hundred thousand dollars to be put in the fund, further to name the town council as its agents to expend that said fund. Majority, uh, vote required. Any questions from the, uh, council? Any questions from the budget committee? Questions from the public? I might just say, any questions from anybody going forward, except for Ray.
Ray Brezlin, three Gary Drive. Uh, this is most important, obviously, oh, it's got to do with water, but, um, we were required, uh, a couple of years ago, I think, maybe a year and a half ago, a couple of years ago, uh, we were required by the, I believe, US EPA to, uh, because of the size of the town, um, we, we're required to monitor, um, the runoff, stormwater runoff, and, um, which we have been doing, um, but it's kind of a difficult job to monitor all of this. So, now, we're gonna make sure with this one-hundred thousand dollars, that we're gonna be able to do that. But, I would just wonder how we're going to do that. Are we going to have to hire personnel to do that? Uh, we're, our engineer department is shorthanded as it is. Um, we're at least one person short. Um, I don't know if there's any intention of hiring somebody. I don't see that we have anything in our budget to do that right now. But, somebody's gonna have to do it. Uh, we, we're mandated. Um, we signed it, and we're required to do it. But, uh, that's to monitor throughout town stormwater runoff, and if we, if we have to do, we have to do at least an annual report, and it has to be done right, or we're going, not gonna be in compliance. So, uh, I guess my question is, how are we gonna do it with a hundred thousand dollars? Who's gonna do it? Do we know?
Yeah, we already have a plan set in place. It will be outsourced, and, uh, we're already working through that with our, our environmental engineer.
So, it will be outsourced by a private contractor to do it. Is that correct?
It's a combination of in-house and consulting resources, Mr. Chairman. And just one additional point, uh, we, we do, we, we, he's correct, Mr. Brezlin is correct, that we don't currently have, uh, a filled position for the Assistant Director of Engineering. However, we do have money in the budget to, to hire an Assistant Director of Engineering, and that is something that.
We do, we do have it in, in the budget?
Yes.
Which will probably be needed. But, uh, a hundred thousand dollars is not gonna cover that.
It's going to help get us started. Uh, this is a fairly new federal mandate. It's an unfunded mandate, um, and, uh, there are some things that we need to do to come into compliance, uh, including a post-construction discharge ordinance, um, and all of that, as you pointed out, is very technical. Uh, it's very, it needs to get, it needs to be done right, uh, and so, that's the money to get us started.
Okay.
Maybe we could have a volunteer do it.
Yeah, the, the town engineer is in the back of the room going, "No." I'll just accept the motion to move this to.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll take, uh, is there an aye vote on the, um, on the, um, article?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Five, zero. Article eight.
To see if the town will vote to authorize the town manager to enter in, up to a ten-year lease agreement for the amount of six-hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, for the purpose of leasing two six-wheel trucks, a one-ton dump truck, and a backhoe, and proper equipment, and to raise and appropriate the sum of ninety thousand dollars for the first year's payment for that purpose. This lease agreement contains an escape clause. If passed, this article will require the town to ra- raise ninety thousand dollars in property taxes, resulting in the tax rate impact of zero point zero one four dollars in FY twenty-five, based upon projected assessed values.
Anyone from the council for questions? Budget committee? Anyone from the public?
Richard Blonsky, eighty-ninth Hall Road. These vehicles, are these replacing current vehicles, or are these additional vehicles? And why are we replacing them?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dave Wally, Director of Public Works Municipal Facilities. Um, so the answer to your question, we have four pieces of equipment that were, were brought forward. Uh, all four of them, by the time of receipt, will be extending their life expectancy in service. We actually had three large six-wheelers, according to our replacement plan, that should be brought forward this year. That's an awful lot to ask. Um, so what we did was, and we don't like to get three vehicles all in one shot like that, 'cause it just compounds problems down the line, too, when it comes to maintaining these things and then replacing them. It gets us back on track to a more streamlined, uh, replacement with two vehicles per year. We got two approved last year. We had a few years that we had skipped over prior to me, me arriving here. And so, next year, we only have one large vehicle. So, we thought we could defer one, and then next year, just replace two as well. And then in the, then, I believe it's the two years after that, we don't have any large vehicles. We do have other smaller vehicles, but not large ones, such as, um, Truck five and Truck ten. So, they'll, Truck five and Truck ten will exceed their life expectancy by, by about three years. When I toured the facility down there and showed some of this equipment to the budget committee, um, they even saw firsthand how, uh, parts of the fatigue right off the hydraulic pumps was, was peeling off, and I'd hand it to them and whatnot. So, they, they saw it, and I can, I can give this information to you as well.
Yep.
The backhoe, we've had some, um, s- some heavy work that needs to be done on the back end of that machine. It is coming up on its life expectancy of fifteen years. Uh, and we thought, rather than really get into a can of worms with that machine to just follow the, the program, and by the time we receive it, we'll hit that mark. Um, as well as with one of the one-tons. Now, the, the one-ton Truck fourteen, uh, if you were to look at that, I was explaining this to the budget committee as well, it's a little bit difficult to understand, because we actually went and really rehabbed that truck, 'cause there was so much rot and decay on the back end of it and everything else and underneath it. This summer, we took some time, we sandblasted it as best we could, we did some patch metal work, and then we repainted it. But you can see in the photos and stuff like that, too, and the budget committee was able to even feel it, that y- you can feel the rust and that's there. So, we were just trying to slow down the truck being rotted out right, right off from underneath it, so, um, so those are the pieces of equipment that we brought forward this year.
Okay, the, uh, town trucks, are these treated underneath each year?
Treated.
Treated. You can, you can get a, um, it's made from lantil, it's actually made from sheep's wool, and that stops the rust, so you can get longer out of vehicles.
Right.
You just shoot it. I know the fire department knows it.
We, we can, um, do those things. They are, um, bit out that way in the first year. Um, I, I will tell you, um, though, when you're in construction and whatnot, and rocks, every time you get a nick or whatever, that, that spray is, is now gone. It, it, it's not like, you know, something that's a solid material. It's a spray, and once you start getting nicks and corrosion.
The workshop.
What's that?
That was a question I asked, and you had briefed that during the workshop.
Yeah, yeah. So, it, it, I mean, you, you can do it, it's costly to do it, but, uh, again, the, the types of environment that these trucks are in, it's, it's kind of cost prohibitive, really.
Well, just so you know, that, um, coating, if you chip it, it creeps back. It never hardens. That's what it's made for.
Yeah.
Um, it's not all that expensive to do. If you have, I don't know if you do your maintenance on your own vehicles. Spray gun's about a buck and a half, and it's about eighty dollars a gallon to spray it, and you spray them once a year.
I mean, if, if we wanted to look at getting longer life out of our vehicles, what I would recommend is going with stainless steel bodies. Um, the hydraulic lines that we use, you can use, uh, there's a new type out there that is, is less, uh, it's expensive, but doesn't blow as much, it's less corrosive. Uh, and then moreover, um, what we're studying right now with our, um, master plan for, for to have a actual facility, will be to actually be able to wash these vehicles more frequently and put them inside a, a facility, rather than having them out in the weather all year long. There's three million dollars worth of equipment right now that's sitting out there under the five inches of rain we got last week, the ice, the snow, the foot of snow that's been on it and melted off on, you know, excavators and whatnot, because we just don't have a facility. So, that'd be a better way of, of getting a, an extended longevity out of our equipment.
Um, the two six-wheel trucks, what are, what are the current ones? Are they Fords? What are they? F five-fifties?
Uh, they're.
Oh, do we have?
They're right here, yeah. I, if you want these, I can give them.
Yeah.
It has all the specs, the miles, the hours, everything.
That's what I, that's what I was gonna ask for.
Yep.
Um, you know, if they need to be replaced, they need to be replaced, but.
Yeah, these two are internationals, but, um, then the, the one-ton is a Ford, and then the backhoe is a Case, a Caterpillar, I'm sorry.
What's the lease include? Do we have any maintenance agreements on, as part of the lease?
They do, we do, we do purchase, again, depending on how the bids come in, we ask for that as part of the bid package, to see what the extended warranty can be on them. And we usually, we have, um, at least in my experience here, and, and from what I understand in previous purchases, they do purchase those extended warranties.
Okay, but not the extended warranty, a maintenance program? Do we have a maintenance program on them? Are we doing our own maintenance?
Oh, we do our own maintenance on it, yes.
Okay.
And we do our own, well, we do our own in-house evaluation of it, and then we take it to a, a certified state inspection vehicle annually.
Okay. All right, that's all I got. I'll, uh, get hold, yeah, can I?
Yep, absolutely, yep.
'Cause I've, you know, nothing against you.
I believe they're on our website, too.
Yeah, nothing against you, but I've heard stuff's beyond its useful life before, like the police generator we didn't.
Well, and, and I would just say to that, I, I understand that, um, you know, with equipment and whatnot, and that's why, when we were bringing, I don't want to bring forward equipment just because it says, "The useful life is ten years and time's up."
Right, that's my concern.
And that, that was our, that was our analysis of Truck nine, and we thought that it was a little bit more easy on the budgeting process, a little bit easier in the future for the town, um, and it would streamline, get our program back on to, when we're looking for trucks, we're only looking for two per year until we get to those gap years as well.
It's like I'm looking at this one. This truck's got forty-six thousand miles on it.
Understand, understand the miles, but look at the hours.
I know, I see the hours.
And then, and then again, um.
Fifty-six hundred.
You know, the hauling dirt and gravel is one thing, but when you're hauling salt and calcium.
Right, it eats everything up.
Yeah, and you're running them forty-eight hours continuously, like we just did this week on, on one event, and then eighteen hours the next on another event.
They're made for that. Detroit Diesel's, Cat Diesel's.
Well, the, yeah, the, the.
That's what they're made for, so, all right.
Thanks, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Um, I'll accept the motion to, uh, move this to the deliberative.
So moved.
Okay.
Um, council voting aye.
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 Aye. All right.
All right, uh, Article nine, Fire Department Truck Capital Reserve, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate one-hundred thousand dollars to, um, to be placed in the fire vehicle, um, capital reserve fund, and to further authorize use of fifty thousand dollars from the June thirtieth undesignated fund balance for this appropriation. Any questions from the dais?
Question?
Yes.
Um, I think that there's a typo. It says that this pass, the resulting in a tax rate impact of point oh eight. I think it should be point oh oh eight.
That, that is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kate.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the public? Seeing none, accept the motion, move this to deliberative.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Councilors voting aye.
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 Article ten, Fire Department Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate seventy, inappropriate seventy-five thousand dollars to be placed in the fire equipment capital reserve fund, and further to authorize the use of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dol- uh, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars from the June thirtieth unassigned fund balance towards this appropriation. If passed, this article will require the town to raise thirty-seven thousand, five hundred in property taxes, result, resulting in a tax impact of zero point zero zero six dollars in FY twenty-five, based upon projected assessed values.
Anyone from the dais? Anyone from the public?
Who are you?
Hey, 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 he said that.
You want to, you want this time? Um, so, when the fire department came up here.
So, Dan, I'm sorry, you just have to do the address thing, sorry.
Dan Bouchard, Eight O'Connell Drive, two King Edward, forty-five Buckingham, five oh seven Mammoth, how's that? So.
Only one address, it's okay.
Uh, well, I just want to make sure they're all covered, because, you know, they impact all my taxes. This impact my taxes.
Just be a domicile.
So, my understanding, this money, when it goes there, right, this is how, when the fire department came up last time, and gave this presentation about buying the two trucks, correct?
Yep.
That, the money, some, some of this money.
The previous article was that.
That was a previous.
Previous one?
Yep, the fire truck.
Mr. Chairman, I think the confusion is that there was a separate discussion outside the budget about purchasing some fire trucks, um, but that's not this.
Other than, this is about.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, but.
What's your question?
I think what I'm trying, I'm trying to understand is that they were able to do that because of this, right? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Correct.
All right?
And this is how we appropriate for gear and everything else.
Right, so instead of them coming forward and saying, "Hey, we need to buy two fire trucks," um, they've already put some of the money aside in this capital account, right?
Right, trying to.
Through, through time. Right, so we don't have this jump up. So, I think this is a good idea. That's what I'm trying to understand, because.
Thank you, Mr. Bouchard.
Thank you.
I know the last time, when they made that presentation, that was a great way of saving the tax dollars money, and this is a good way of doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We agree.
Accept the motion, move this to deliberative.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All councilors voting aye.
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 Article eleven, recreational capital reserve fund, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate ten thousand dollars to be placed in the recreation department capital reserve fund. If passed, this article will require the town to raise ten thousand dollars in property taxes, resulting in the tax rate impact of zero point zero zero two dollars in FY twenty-five, based upon projected assessed values.
Any questions from the dais?
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, what would this fund be used for?
Give me one second. I have, so, what this fund is used for, it's used for purchasing, leasing, renting, and the maintenance of the various equipment and items that the rec department has. Where their budget's so small, should something break and need to be fixed, it pretty much goes through their budget.
Okay.
Um, that, pretty much, yeah.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Anyone from the public?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move this, uh, Article eleven, to deliberative. Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there was affirmative, uh, all councilors saying yes?
Aye.
Aye.
Article twelve, Pillsbury Cemetery Expansion Capital Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars to be placed in the Pillsbury Cemetery Expansion Capital Reserve Fund, and au- further to authorize the use of twenty-five thousand dollars from the June thirtieth unassigned fund balance towards this appropriation. If passed, this article will require the town to raise fifty thousand dollars in property taxes, resulting in a tax impact rate of zero point zero zero eight in fiscal year twenty-five, based upon projected assessed values.
Any questions from the dais? From the public?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move this to deliberative.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Number of yes votes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article number thirteen, Cable Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, to see if the town will vote and to raise an appropriate thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars to be placed in the capital equipment, cable equipment capital reserve fund, with funding to come from annual distribution of the public education and government access programming from the current franchise agreement. If passed, this article will require the town to raise zero dollars in property taxes, resulting in a tax rate impact of no dollars for FY twenty-five, based on projected assessed values.
Any questions from the dais? Any questions from the public?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move Article thirteen to deliberative.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Councilors voting aye.
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 Article fourteen, two fifty-six Mammoth Road Buildings, also known as Lions Hall, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate five hundred thousand dollars to begin repairs and upgrades for the town, to the town-owned building known as Lions Hall. and upgrades for the town, to the town-owned building known as Lyons Hall, and further to authorize the use of five hundred thousand dollars from the June thirtieth unas, unassigned fund balance towards this appropriation. This special warrant article will be a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA thirty-two colon seven, section six, and will not lapse until the earlier of the completion of this prod, of, of its purpose or June thirtieth, twenty-thirty. If passed, this article will require the town to raise zero dollars in property taxes, resulting in a tax impact, uh, blank, for FY twenty-five, upon proposed assessed values, so just them.
That will be zero as well.
Zero as well.
I'm expecting questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. What happened?
So what-
It doesn't have to go to the, it doesn't have to-
That's great.
Well, it, well, it doesn't have to go to the, to the deliberative, that's why it's on here. So if you wanna do this, then we'll do it. If you don't wanna do this, then we won't do it. Everyone wanted an answer. This brings it to a head. So this, and it doesn't have to go to the ballot. So you all have to say, what do you wanna do, council? I mean, cause we, we batted this thing around for three or four months.
Did we ever get any, any quotes or anything on anything that we asked for?
Well, we've gotten numbers anywhere ranging between eight hundred and fifty thousand-ish to put the place back in shape, but not to make it ADA, you know, required. And we, and, you know, or we can leave it, and leave it and let it go till, till the next year. But at least it finally answers the question. Do you wanna do it, or don't you wanna do it? I mean, if the people wanna leave it for another year, and we mothball it for another year, let's mothball it for another year. You know, we may, we may be able to just fix the floor and at least maintain the building, but this brings it to a head.
Is there an option to just fix the floor? Have we asked John that, or?
Well, I mean, you know, there's always, there's always options. I mean, there's, and we have, we probably have some ARPA funds we might be able to tap into. We might be able to find some money at the end of this fiscal year to do some work on it. But instead of this thing sitting out there for the next year and not getting addressed, at least now it's getting addressed. And if you don't wanna do it, let's not do it.
What do we see the five hundred thousand accomplishing?
It probably puts the, it probably puts the building back in service.
Yeah.
At, you know, with the bare minimum. But if you don't wanna do it, then let's not do it. If you don't wanna, if you, if you only wanna do fifty percent from the undesignated fund balance, and fifty percent to the taxpayers, then let's do that. Or, don't move it to the, to the warrant. We can do that, too. But we can't just do nothing. So, it's up to you all.
Before we appropriate the money, I'd just like to see if we had some, some quotes, you know, some actual figures to know, like, is it enough, you know?
Well, no, it's not enough.
No, I know, so.
No, it says right here, it's not enough.
Right.
It's the start.
Right.
The repairs. No, it's definitely not enough. You know, or, or the answer is, is kick the can down the road and we'll deal with it next year.
All right. Where do we dive in here? Yes, I did, I did get some quotes, um, for some of the, uh, at least some of the disciplines, some of the stuff, it's, it's hard to price out because you don't know exactly what you're gonna need to do until you get into the walls. Um, but I put together just a little something on what I do have. And so, when I looked at putting some pricing together for at least a metal ADA ramp, um, which you're probably more familiar with seeing in front of people's homes and whatnot, but this place that I got was for, you know, commercial grade and whatnot, and we could potentially use the side to get them in on the, um, into the hall, which, it, it, it may not make us compliant, but it gives us our accessibility that we need. Um, I got prices for electrical work, a, um, smoke alarm system, uh, the approach that we discussed with our, um, advisors on this, uh, for the approach to fixing the floor so that it never falls in again by filling that void with flowable fill and doing a concrete, um, type slab, plumbing, and HVAC. Um, those quotes brought me to six oh, six hundred nine thousand, uh, plus. Didn't have any pricing on insulation yet, but I think it's fairly obvious that we're gonna have to insulate the building more appropriately than it, than it is at, at all. Uh, there's been no hazmat assessment done on the building, but I suspect that we will find certain things in there. Um, I do know, I have a stack of asbestos tiles, uh, in the closet, so there's gotta be a reason why they're there. They're probably encapsulated i, at some point under the flooring, uh, in the remainder of the first floor. Um, we did get a price for, uh, fire sprinklers just so that we have it, but, um, in order to do that, we'd probably have to spend about another thirty thousand dollars on site work to get the water to the property, to put in the hundred thousand dollars, um, fire sprinklers. And then there's the whole gambit of, you know, these are just prices for them to do their work, but there's a lot of work that has to be, has to happen in order for the electricians to put the wiring in the wall. There's sheet rock that needs to be removed, there's demolition work that needs to be done, there's certain things that need to be removed for them to do their work and then put back. So, I was able to solicit and get some hourly, um, on, you know, having a supervisor with demo per, price per hour, framing per hour, drywall, carpenter, and general labor. I, so I do have some hourly's on that, but I don't have exact estimates on how much of that it would be in order to get, to, to do the other six hundred nine thousand. Um, and then, like I said, this gets us to a baseline where we didn't, the, the other stuff that we had looked at, the conceptuals and whatnot, that's all gone. There's no site work, there's no exterior work, there's no preservation work, so any of the tin ceiling and all that, and bringing back the look of the, the timing, that's all gone. Uh, there are no additional bathrooms. The kitchen will be, will have to go in order to get the bathrooms to the size that we need them to be for ADA compliance, so there will be no, uh, kitchen of sort, uh, no office space. The, the septic will just, will leave it as is and hope for the best. Um, no landscaping, and then the second floor will, obviously, we're not doing anything up there, we're just gonna close it off. So, um, that's kinda where we're at. Um, you know, there's still a lot of-
Eight, nine hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I would say with the, you know, the work that we don't know how many hours it's gonna take, coupled with, um, some of the price quotes we got, and then, you know, we'll need to have some form of a project manager or something to that extent to, that's a little bit more, and it's gonna have to be some, make some professional engineer questions on certain things that we, that are discovered when we get into a, a project of this magnitude, so.
So, council, question is, do you wanna kill it? Do you wanna change the number? What do you wanna do?
I think, it, my opinion, I, I think that the, I appreciate the work that Dave, you, you put into this project so far today, and I, and a, a lot of work to even hold the town hall meetings and stuff, but I think that the building is definitely worth, in my opinion, holding because of the preservation of, of, of that building. And in my opinion, I think if we're to hold it and move it to next year, it'd probably be more appropriate so that we can give it the justice it's due, if that makes sense.
It's up to you all.
I agree with you.
This at least brings it to a head. One way or the other, we go.
So, I, I, I mean, I, I think we should, should hold off.
And I, too, think that we need to have more, fine-tuned numbers to be able to move ahead so that the public's more aware, and, I mean, yeah, we can put a fourth, five hundred thousand as a holding place for a future, but we really should know what the real numbers are gonna be costing us, because in the end, it very well could be way more than a million, and it could be closer to what the engineering company actually came up with. So-
Yeah, I, I-
I would hate to just put money aside when really it's just a, a drop in the bucket.
I, I matched some of these numbers up to some of what the engineers' estimates were in our evaluation of the building and whatnot, and, and they're pretty close. They, they really are.
Yeah, I thought they would be.
You know, but, um, you know, obviously, we were doing a lot more to the, we were doing a, a top-down total, you know, making the whole place functional. Um, my reservations and uneasiness is that we still really didn't take that next step of, you know, doing the due diligence work, knowing exactly if we, has this materials, what, what, what it's gonna take to deal with it. I mean, even if we demoed the building, we'd have to still do that analysis, because they, they need to know what's, what they're, what they're taking away.
So you're even proposing holdoff?
Well, that, that, that's, that's your decision. Don't put that on me.
I understand that, but also, I'm, I'm not an engineer.
I'm just telling you what I have for information.
Don't put words in there.
But, um, it was, it was tough to get some of these numbers together because I didn't even have a plan to give them on, well, exactly, you know, how much wiring are you doing? What, what, what types of wiring, you know, are you, they were asking, you know, questions like, are you gonna have a generator? Cause if you're gonna have a generator, is it gonna do the whole facility, some of the facility? That, that then changes the type of wiring you use, are you doing, you know? So, and I'm not an electrical engineer, so sometimes you're gonna, you're gonna, we're gonna need some of that kind of information to even get some of this work done, you know? Um, I'd hate to wire the building and then, uh, we do get it, you know, accessible to an extent to the public, um, and then we, we get some new energy and excitement about it and say, yeah, well, let's get the second floor going again, you know, and, okay, well, then in order to put in the lift, we find out that we didn't run the power to it that we should've had in that area, and now we gotta open up walls again, in, 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 in that nature, so, um-
Okay.
Yep, I'm good.
So, well, this, like I said, this is strictly to bring it to a head. I'm, I'm gonna ask for a motion to eliminate this, but I'll accept any other comments.
So, I will say, I'm glad to hear that the outside numbers that Dave was finding were in tune with our outside engineering firm's numbers, and they were not finding the sky numbers. So, you know, I think it was very fruitful on us to go to the outside engineering firm and find out what it would actually cost, and that it was worth our time to do so. And, you know, I think, you know, in fine-tuning these numbers for the next year, we may find that it may actually come back up to what the engineering firm was.
And to make it real, too, all the vendors that we spoke to were, were Leninary-based, with the exception of the ADA metal ramp. Um, and then the, the only GC that I could get to come out was actually from, uh, Armac Valley area to give me those hourly rates, so, but he gauged them to New Hampshire rates, not prevailing wages in Massachusetts.
Of course.
So can I suggest something?
Sure.
Would it be too weird or whatever to say just, do you guys wanna do something with the Lyons Hall and give it to the voters, instead of doing all this kinda guesswork?
Well, we would've had, um, it's a little late in the process to put a question on the ballot.
Okay, cause we're gonna dismiss it, it sounds like, this, right?
Well, what I'm gonna ask for is, based on what I've heard from the council, the way the council feels is, I'm gonna ask for them to make a motion to eliminate Article fourteen, to the deliberative.
Or if-
But at le, but at least this brings it to a head, so that we now have to pick a path forward after this.
Yeah, I mean, um, if you don't wanna move forward with it at all, that I respect your decisions, um, I guess I would then ask in return, what am I doing? Am I, am I just, you know, will we just keep in the building as it is now, which is fine, it's, it's, it's not, we're not neglecting it, okay? I'm plowing the parking lot, we're keeping the heat at the, at the levels that are respectable, we're keeping the AC, you know, we find little issues, we deal with them. Um, and, and mothballing it for another year is not a problem, but if we do nothing in that year, we're not, we're gonna be sitting right here again, not knowing-
Well, from what I'm hearing from this sitting council is, is that they wanna bring this to the, to the voters next year as a warrant. That's what I'm hearing.
Oh, okay.
So, is what Dave can do now?
Yeah.
Is clean it up.
Is what?
Clean it up.
Oh, it's empty.
The back rooms are all empty.
Well, there, there's- There's some items in the back end of the building that, um, that are being stored there, yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna clean it up, including the attic?
Well-
I mean, if we're gonna mothball it, let's clean everything out.
Well, I, I, I don't wanna send employees into that attic and, and getting things airborne without knowing exactly-
Okay.
-what that stuff is. The stuff in the back, if you, if you want me to tell, tell, you know, those that own it to get it out of there, fine, but the town does u, utilize them for, for certain events, for home, home stand, whatever, but I can do that.
I, I guess, as he said, let's organize it.
Sorry.
Let's organize it.
Yeah.
Versus the way it is right now.
And then I'd also include with that is, going forth over the next year, fine-tuning the numbers upon what exactly we really need, so that we have a better picture.
Well, you're gonna need, you're making a commitment here that, you know, you know-
Yeah, so, I mean-
That the, the council's, you know, there's gonna be four of us here next year who are here for, you know, for sure, as long as we're all alive, um, that, you know, you're gonna bring this to the warrant next year.
Yeah, and-
Yep.
I, in order to, to do the, the finalization of whatever, what we were going to, um, you know, I've, I've got it laid out, we can phase it, wha, whatever, but it, it's costly to do it, but, you know, to get the final set of plans and whatnot, um, you know, you're looking at a tune of almost two hundred thousand dollars, so, um, that's to do the hazmat analysis, get a final plan, um, you know, get engineered plans that we could put out to bids and then cherry pick what it is, we, what-
Okay.
How much of it do we wanna do? Do we wanna do it in a year, two years, three years? Um, but do it in a sequ, sequential order that makes sense, so that we're not, you know, thinking about what may come, and then not running the appropriate power to a certain point, or, um, like, for example, for the bathrooms, the, the original conceptual was also gonna have bathrooms at the back, and the new septic system was gonna go in the back. So, if we fix the floor, what I had the plumber doing was putting in the pipe dry, because if we're gonna renovate just the front, the front ones, the, the septic's in the front, so I don't wanna not have a pipe underneath the concrete, and then have to rip the whole floor up again if we decide to go with more rooms in the back or the expansion that we were talking about. And then all the plumbing's gotta get redone to send it to the new septic system in the back, as opposed to what's in the front. So, it, it, there's a lot to be, to get together.
Okay, so I'm gonna accept the motion to, oh, go ahead, Heather.
Sorry.
Dave?
Hello?
Heather Burkery, um, one thirty-two Pillsbury Road. I just wanna say, and I'm not wishing anything on anybody's warrants, I appreciate the work that's gone on, into them, if warrant Article Three does not pass, and that ARPA money that can very valuably be used for community improvements as well, um, that would be about two million, if that could be proposed to be used for one million towards the Lyons Hall, and maybe one million towards pickleball courts. But Lyons Hall first, but I'm just saying that might be a good use of the, that would be a good use of those funds if we had them available to use, to be obligated by December twenty twenty-four.
And that can be discussed after the election, so, cause we have a little bit of time.
Just throwing it out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, apparently we're allowing public comment, is that right?
Yes.
I, I am, I, I was just saying not to, to speak while he was speaking, that's all. Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you, you, you were looking to talk, and he wasn't following you, so.
Oh, I don't wanna talk over you, no, you had a lot to say. Okay, so, Ray President, three Gary Drive.
Hey, Ray.
Okay, so, uh, currently I-
Two Gary, th, three.
Three.
Uh, this is not funny anymore, okay, look, uh, I believe we've spent over thirty-six thousand dollars so far for Western Sampson to do a big study about this, okay? Uh, we've also talked to the general public, and the general public has made it perfectly clear that they would like to s, uh, save the building, for some purpose, which at this point, nobody has decided what it's going to be used for. The Lyons people used it for a long time, that somehow they managed and got along. Now, the building is not in good shape, we know that. Work needs to be done, okay? So, what we need to decide here, somebody needs to decide, is what exactly are we going to do with the building? Do we have any kind of a plan, what we're gonna do with the building? Are we gonna save the building or not? We've listened to the general public, the general public considers it a historic building, and they would like to save it. That has been pretty clear. I think everybody understands that, okay? So, uh, I, I, I don't understand the problem of you moving it to a warrant article and letting the people decide, but we have to know what, for instance, if it's gonna be five hundred thousand dollars, what that money's going to be used for. We need to have a plan. With all due respect, with everything that, uh, what's your name again?
Ouch.
Uh, you know, he, he spent a lot of time on this. Uh, we've spent a lot of money on this. The people have spoken. Apparently, the general consensus is, we do want to save the building, we don't want to tear it down. It would probably cost more money to tear the thing down, okay? So, I don't understand why we're not gonna continue to put it on a warrant article. It's either gonna be passed or it's not gonna be passed, but it's extremely important what the money is gonna be used for. All, all this about insulating the building and, and doing this and doing that and putting in the lift and so forth may happen down the road when and if we decide what we're gonna use the building for. What needs to be happened, we need to take care of the floor, we need to take care of the foundation, and we need to take care of the drainage. I'm saying that's what just needs to be done. Now, we do have from Western Sampson some cost on some of those items, but, uh, not in great detail, and, uh, I think we need to know that. Putting it down the road, we know the price is gonna go up, okay? And then we're gonna decide what we're gonna do with the building? I think we have to decide whether we're gonna save the building or not, and if we are, what are we going to do with it? And beyond that, what are we gonna use it for?
All set.
Did I speak too strongly?
No.
I'm sorry.
All set. Thank you.
Is, is the problem with it being $500,000, that that doesn't cover nearly enough to renovate what would make the building useful? And on top of that, if we do do some of the projects like he was talking about, like the floor and the foundations, that we may end up needing to re- potentially redo some of those projects because we haven't gone through a full detailed design process, and thus we wasted some of that money because we need to go back and redo some of the stuff that we already did.
That's precisely correct.
That's what I assume. Okay, thank you.
Is that, if, if we, uh, kinda go at it this course, that's some of my reservations, is that, you know, we're not thinking in the totality of what we see coming, and then we end up closing up a wall and then only have, we have to reopen it, or we didn't put a pipe where we needed it and whatnot.
Yeah, okay.
The, the floor, I, I know the floor is what kicked this all off, but quite honestly, that's the last thing that I'm concerned about with having to remedy, because it, it's just a, it, it, it's nothing structural per se to the, to the overall facility, uh, and, you know, we have to know what we're gonna put through that area before we, and how we are gonna actually do it.
Yes.
Whether if we, you know, do timber frame construction the way it's, is now, or are we gonna entertain the idea of doing the flowable fill and, and the concrete slab, and that way the floor is never falling in ever again? This is round three now, uh, and we won't have to worry about that. But, so there's a lot of thought before we, you know, make that firm, that what do we need to run from the front of the building to the back of the building and whatnot? So...
It just seems like a really, really slippery slope here. Um, we're talking about little costs here, little costs there, and it's just gonna balloon, and it's gonna scare the crap out of me. I don't, it really seems like a want to me.
What's a want? I'm sorry?
Lions Hall.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Well, I'm just waiting. You ready? Um...
Dan Bouchard.
Dan Bouchard, Eight O'Connell Drive.
I'm Al.
Al. I mean, I appreciate all the work Dave's put in this, and, and I understand where the council is, is coming from as far as you want a, a plan, but I think people in town also wanna s- save that building, and I think putting it off for another year, the price is just gonna go up more? I mean, is there, have you given any thought to possibly, since you put $500,000 there, put $500,000 coming out of the undesignated fund balance and raise $500, all right? You don't have to do it, all right? But it gives you that money, if it passes, to look at it and say, all right, we got a million, what can we do? Do we need a project manager, or can we use people in-house here that we have, you know, in our building department that knows building and, and everything else? Just my thought.
But if, but time would allow us to do that. Time will also allow us to look and see if, if there's our grants. I said this when I was on the budget committee, and I beat it all the time, there's one thing that's better than money, it's free money. And if there's a way that we can get...
Nothing is free, Chad. We paid for it somehow.
I under... You are correct.
Yeah.
But if there's some way that we can do a little bit more research, we've retained, we, and we have retained, correct me if I'm wrong, i- in a grant writing agency that has, hosts a database and stuff like that, if we can say, hey, you know, and I don't know, and I don't want to get into this right now, but maybe utilize them to do some research on some grants so that we can give the Morrison House the proper justice that it deserves. That's what...
The Lions Hall.
Lions Hall, thank you.
Reverend Morrison meeting us.
Thank you. Reverend Morrison, so that's my point. So, putting it off is not saying no, it's saying, yes, there are costs that are probably gonna go up.
Sure.
We'd be idiots to say, I'd be an idiot to say otherwise, I'm not accusing anyone else of being an idiot.
But maybe if you put it out there for $500 and $500, and it gets voted down...
And then I can't touch the building.
Then there's, then it, then it's gonna do this...
Then I, then I can't, if it gets voted down, I can't touch the building for a year, I can't take any ARPA funds, I can't take any, spend the maintenance trust funds, I can't do anything.
Yep.
You can't even take, okay, can't take money from the, uh, trust fund to do repairs or anything like that?
Nothing.
Okay.
Setting myself up that, that way.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna accept the motion to eliminate Article 14.
So, moved?
Second.
Was in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Onto the new Article 14.
Article 14, Police Department, add additional prosecutor to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $162,000 for the purpose of adding a second full-time prosecutor to assist in, in meeting increasing caseloads and providing better victim outreach and consultation. If this article passes, this appropriation will be part of both the operating and default budget in future years. If passed, this article will require the town to raise $162,000 in property taxes, resulting in a tax rate impact of $0.025 in FY25 based upon projected assessed values.
Questions from the dais? Questions from the public?
On this article, uh, last time, Dan Bouchard, Eight O'Connell Drive, last time we had the council...
He's gotta keep track of all this over there.
Oh, he's got me down by now.
How to do it anyway?
Last time I was here at the council meeting, I asked some questions about, um, you know, how much we've paid for educational incentives and et cetera, all right? Uh, I did get a response back, uh, the chief said that, um, we paid one, um, person at least $70,000 for their education, okay, who got a law degree. We have another person who is certified as a prosecutor as well. My point is this, okay? And I didn't go back to Mike and say, I want numbers, I want exactly how much in the last 10 years, because I think you'll find that that number is very interesting to see how much we've paid as taxpayers to edu- for educational incentives for people, and I think it's great that we do that, as long as the town benefits from it. And we're not benefiting from it if we have to hire another individual to do prosecution. Now, this article will now increase, if it passes, the default budget for next year.
That is correct.
Okay? So, it's not just so many pennies, it's forever. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment on it, Mr. Chair?
Martha Smith, 38th F Street Drive, um, I don't know if this is true or not, but I'm gonna ask it here because I figure I'll get an honest answer. I have heard that our current prosecutor works as a prosecutor for like five other towns. Do you know if that's true?
You can ask as many questions as you want, and I'll go answer all of them.
Is that your only question?
But, no, that, that, well, that's my question. If, if, if the prosecutor is working presently for Town of Londonderry and for additional towns, then, you know, I think she's gotta make a choice. If she can't handle her caseload or he, sorry...
Can I talk to that?
Then, then I think that, in my opinion, that, that she has to make a decision of whether she's gonna do Londonderry or, you know, and obviously, if we're looking for this kind of money, they're gonna pay a second person quite a bit of money, uh, to, to handle the overload, where they could give her a little more money and she give up two towns.
So, can I? Please.
All right, go ahead, Chief.
Yeah.
Maybe you don't mind, I'm gonna stand, 'cause I'm sitting long enough.
Thank you, that's fine.
So, as we discussed before, this has nothing to do with her second job. Like most people, having a second job is, uh, for personal or private reasons. Um, this woman who works for us is a great prosecutor, she works 40-plus hours a week for the police department. She is entitled to days off, as we all are from our employers, and she chooses to work an extra job. This does not prevent her from doing her work here, this is not why we're asking for a second full-time prosecutor, this is to assist with the additional duties that have been passed on by, uh, to us from the courts that we have no control over. Uh, so, to speculate that rumors or, um, five jobs is incorrect. Uh, she works for two part-time PDs, one day a month, in the same jurisdiction, on the same timeframe. So, this isn't something new, this has been going on, uh, since, let me back up a second, not this woman particularly, but the practice of allowing, uh, former prosecutors, for the 25 years or whatever I've been here, every other prosecutor who has ever worked for this municipality has been able to do the same thing. So, if they work one day for five or six hours part-time, they should be allowed to do that. I will never tell somebody that they cannot have an outside job unless it interfered with their work for the Town of Londonderry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I have one follow-up for you. You said that there was additional work that was put on to the prosecutor by the courts, can you explain?
Yeah, so, as you said before, Martha, I don't know if you were at that, uh, first couple of budget hearings, felonies first program went away, which is extra work that the prosecutor was able to dump off. So, now, all that is coming back to the police department. And whereas we have approximately 700 arrests this year, of all the felonies, uh, that added work is gonna be taken upon by that one person. So, what we decided to do was not come to the budget committee and the town council and/or the, the taxpayers and, and throw some frivolous position out there that we need, just to say we need something. Uh, I had said a year and a half ago, I'll only come to the taxpayers for needs and not wants. We need a second prosecutor to assist with this extra work. Um, and as Mr. Bouchard pointed out, yeah, we, we do have a tuition, uh, program that the taxpayers voted on in the collective bargaining agreement. I think it's important, I think it's fair and reasonable, and I think you do benefit despite what Mr. Bouchard said, you draw some of the best people in here, so you do get a bang for your buck. Because if we don't have that incentive, they'll go to another agency or another town that supports them and, and offers it. So, it's, I think it's a win, even though Mr. Bouchard may feel differently, it is. And yes, we did pay someone, or you did, uh, paid someone $70,000, but that person's also given 23 years of service to this community too, and I think that is the benefit that we get back in return.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Richard Polinsky, 89th Hall Road. Uh, I guess this question can be answered by either Justin or the chief. Do we currently have any unfilled positions in the police department? Because I know for year, for quite a few years, Justin and I had talked about in the past, we had unfilled positions yet that was still in the budget. Has those been eliminated, or are they still sitting out there floating? Because I know the lettering for the front of the station was used, that money was used from there.
I'll, I'll address that, Mr. Chairman. Um, we do not have, uh, unfilled positions that are just sitting out there, uh, floating. What we have is, uh, a staffing crisis in New Hampshire at every level of government. It has afflicted police departments probably most harshly, um, at least in terms of, uh, you know, New Hampshire and, and around the, uh, the country. Since I took office, uh, Justin and I have, uh, given clear instructions to our public safety departments that we want each and every one of the positions that the taxpayers have approved filled. Um, now, that takes time, um, we've made changes at the police department, we've made changes at the fire department to come closer to full staffing, um, but any suggestion that those positions are, are, you know, being, uh, held for some other purpose, a purpose other than getting bodies in there, uh, to, uh, keep this community safe is, is wrong.
Well, then I guess I'll send you the information that was given to me by the town. And instead of making this confrontational, just answer the question. Do we have open positions that have not been filled, and how long have those positions been open and unfilled? Because you can use that money to pay the new prosecutor. It's a real simple question that doesn't have to be convoluted by the town manager, which is what he likes to do.
All right, that's, that's enough.
That's my right to say.
Well, that's good. You can be excused now, we're done.
You can be excused. Oh, yeah, you're still waiting.
Thank you, thank you, goodbye.
I want any answer.
Goodbye.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move Article 14 to deliberative.
Second. Well, was in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, I'm looking for a yes vote on, um, on Article 14.
Aye.
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 Five zero.
Article 15, Fire Department, additional firefighters, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $495,000 to the purpose of adding additional firefighters with the intention of bringing, to, to bring staffing of each battalion to 13 per shift. This will improve the fire department's ability to effectively meet the needs and the challenges of an aging community that is rapidly growing by enhancing advanced life support response to medical emergencies at the paramedic level. It also assists the fire department by improving compliance with N- National Fire Protection Association staffing standards for the Town of Londonderry. If this article passes, this appropriation will be part of both the operating and default budget in future years. If passed, this article will require the town to raise $495,000 in property taxes, resulting in a tax impact rate of $0.077 in FY25 based upon projected assessed values.
Any questions from the dais? Any questions from the public?
I'm doing the math, all right? If I do four firefighters, it should come up to $648,000. If we're paying a prosecutor, uh, $162,000...
So, these are baked-in costs that include NHRS, um, health insurance as well. Firefighters, uh, NHRS contribution for the employer is 30% compared to 14.07, I believe, for civilians such as the prosecutor. Um, in addition to that, per the CBA for firefighters, we're assuming a level-one firefighter, um, that is a salary of $52,555 compared to the prosecutor's salary of $95,000.
Okay. I'm just wanna make sure, because you mentioned we're aging community, and I'm aging, and, you know, I wanted to make sure that this number, we, we have enough to cover the four firefighters. Paramedics, they come to my house, you know? Come.
Thank you. Justin's done a lot of research on this, he's done these numbers backwards and forward.
So, Mr. Chair...
Any further questions from the public?
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move Article, uh, make a motion to move Article 15 to, uh, deliberative.
Second. Well, was in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm looking for a yes vote from the council.
Aye.
Aye.
Article 16, Pickleball Courts, to see if the town will vote and, or vote to raise an appropriate $490,000 for the design and construction of up to 10 pickleball courts. This special warrant article will be non-lapsing, will be a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA 32:7, Section 6, um, and will not lapse until the earlier of the completion of its purpose or June 30th, 2030. If passed, this article will require the town to raise $490,000 in property taxes, resulting in a tax impact rate of $0.077 in FY25 based upon projected assessed values.
Okay, so for the dais, what we had discussed in the past was is whether we would use any of the undesignated fund balance for this particular article. Is that still on the table before I send this to the public?
All right.
I think no.
How much? How much is left in our UFP?
Yeah.
We've got 6.2 million.
What do we need from...
What's the threshold?
The state.
Well, we're, we're above the threshold, but anytime you ask the finance director, his answer is no.
No.
So...
I trust him.
So, the question is for the council, not for the finance director.
So, I will give my spiel.
What?
I will give my spiel.
Uh, you know what? It's 10 o'clock. We're good.
Based on our current policy, we can spend up to 4.3. Based on our old policy that takes into account the school district where we give them their money, we can spend $738,000. Based on DRA's recommendation, we can spend $183,000. And based on GFOA, the Governmental Finance Officers Association, we can spend $51,000.
Meanwhile, we're already putting UFB towards other items.
Right, so we were just about to put $500 towards the Lions Hall, so, you know.
My vote's no. Put any money for it, so.
Anything from the UFB?
I'd say no.
Ron says no.
This is a want and not a need. If we're going to put any money towards it, we need to put it towards the, towards the needs of the town.
Well, let's hear from the public.
Okay.
Ray Version 3, Gary Drive. I think I concur with Ron, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a want, not a need. And it's fine. Pickleball probably is a really nice thing. Maybe I could even play it. But it's not a need. It's not a need. I mean, if good people want to exercise, they want to play a game, all well and good, you know? Unfortunately, most of the people that play are probably over the age of 55. Not everybody, but, once again, this is a nice idea, but we're talking almost a half a million dollars to put in 10 fields that have to be maintained. Maybe that's going to be covered by something else. I don't know. But with everything that's going on and all the burden the taxpayers are trying to deal with, you know, we're totally, we're talking about probably in, close to $130 million, maybe more if we're counting everything. And this is not a need. It's fine if people want to go out and raise the money privately, have companies donate to do the work, so forth and so on. But this should not be put on the burden of the taxpayers. That's what I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Bolinsky, 89 Hall Road. Couple of questions on this. I've been watching some of the meetings on this, and I know they've done a lot of work. Is there a, is there a definitive and definite spot to put this? I heard West Road possible. If we don't have a definitive and a spot that's already set for this, well, we may have land acquisition costs. During the presentation, I also believe they said between four and 10 public courts. Well, four courts is $122.5 a court. 10 courts is $49,000 a court. To me, this looks like an incomplete set of numbers. Should know where the land is, because if we have to buy land, it's going to increase it if we can't put it on something the town owns. And I'd like to know how many courts? $122.5 a court is a lot different than $49,000 a court. Again, this is kind of like the Lions Hall. It's an incomplete warrant article, in my opinion.
Arthur Salitis, 12 Monvern and Drive. I'm not sure where the court's going. West Road has a beautiful site for it. To answer Mr. Bolinsky's question, when you put the shovel in the ground, you don't know what's under there. That was the problem we had a couple of years ago. And you don't know until you, till you've done it. If we were multimillionaires building a new building that we're going to rent for millions of dollars, we would do borrowings and whatever. But we don't know until we put, until they put the shovel in the ground. I object to one of the previous speakers saying, I'd like to see him do fundraisers. And I'll say what I said a couple of years ago. Did we ask the firemen and the policemen and the library to do cookie sales and bake sales? To build their buildings? We're asking for things for people to recreate. Do we ask the library, why don't you rent the books instead of let people read them? People want to recreate. It's part of, and go back to JFK way back in the day, about a healthy body, and I think people who are active want to be active. And I think we need to afford that opportunity to them without having them stand on the corner doing a cake sale or bake sale of little cans to collect quarters and dimes. So is it worth it? I think it's very much worth it, but I'm very biased towards recreation. So that's it. Notice how brief I was, Dan.
Dan Bouchard, 80 Connel Drive. You got that? I just want to point out a couple of things on the fundraiser part, okay? I don't know how many people were here back then when they were going to do a fundraiser for a skating rink in town. How well did that go? Never happened, okay? So.
We don't have a skating rink?
Nope, we don't. All right. Again, we talk about aging community. Want to keep us active, all right? Pickleball court be nice. Think about what we do for the seniors in this community, all right? As long as I've lived in this community, the seniors always take a backseat to everything, okay? It took forever to get that senior center, all right, done so people could go up there and enjoy that. I don't see why you can't take the money out of the undesignated fund balance for this, okay? Because you were going to do it for the Lions Hall, and that got poo-pooed away. So maybe we could look at it, doing it this way. I'm sure that these people who have done a lot of work on this project will go back to their contractors that they've talked to. And I know a few contractors in this community that would be more than happy to help them. They'll probably help with the cost of this project, all right? So I think this is something that the town should support. Thank you.
My name is Brian Smolik. I live on 25 Molton Drive. I'm a member of the Pickleball Task Force. The comments that we made a minute ago, I take great exception, as do my colleagues here on the committee. We did do our homework. We did do a study. We've got this down to a penny in terms of what the costs are to do this right. We are one of, within 20 miles of Londonderry, there is not one town, not one, that is in the position we are right now, is not having a pickleball facility. You know, we use the words, "we lead the way" in Londonderry. No, no, we lag the way when it comes to, what was said earlier, about, about our seniors. We just don't have any programs here. Not to mention, it's a high school sport very soon. Not to mention, it's going to be something that we do here in town, people like myself. And going to Litchfield, which by the way, I give them great credit. They've shared everything they've done to do it right with us and make this thing go, go forward in the right way. Their courts are packed. They have long lines, and they cut off registration for non-residents. So where do we play in Londonderry? Do we beg? I don't think so. We lead the way. So we have this thing down to a science. We know how much money we need. We have the vendors lined up. I've done, we've done RFQ. We know what the costs are. And when we choose to do an RFP, where we have best and final bids coming in, that $490 may not even be high. It'll be low. Excuse me. We may not even need that much money, but we don't know until we have the green light from you. So please, we do need your support. Thank you. Oh, and one more thing. West Road has been identified from the get-go as a place to go. We looked around at other options right here. Feasibility for some land that turn out to be wetland or incomplete land. It's going to be West Road. We've looked at it with the vendors. We know where we're going. Thank you.
Hello, Heather Burkery, 132 Pillsbury Road. Just in addition to what they've said, I had mentioned a grant before, and I believe Steve talked about it last time, but there are different options that we are looking into, one of which is the Division of Parks and Recreation Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant. I actually have a list here. I won't read them all, but there's 34 open grants, anywhere from $50,000 to, I think the highest one is $1 million. And those are something that the pickleball courts, when I talked to the gentleman, he said this is something that they would likely approve. And these are all different things, from rail trails, different networks that have been done in towns that this would fall into. And it's a one-to-one program. That's typically anywhere from $40,000 to $500,000 that they reimburse. So if the town pays, let's just say $490,000 for the courts, and this grant would get approved, up to half of that would get sent back, right back to the town. And that's just something that the town has to work on. So I can't give specifics because they will only work with specifically someone from the town. But we are looking at different avenues, so we appreciate your support.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you.
So if the town put $490,000, voted that in, and we came out of undesignated fund balance, and they got grants, let's say 200, all right? Then we're not getting, taking $490 out of the undesignated fund balance. Would it only be taken $290?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
The other thing I want to mention too is that, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Pickleball Task Force, that the $490,000 is the one-time fee and that there will be an annual membership fee to reserve some of the courts that should pay for the annual upkeep and maintenance of it. So it's a one-time, basically, tax charge, and then the rest of it will be self-funding, correct?
That's correct. We're going to form, we, with your permission, of course, the 501(c)(3) Londonshire Pickleball Association, much like Litchfield has formed, the same exact thing. The fees that get paid into that, by the way, anybody in towns can play for free. If these courts are set up, anybody can play for free. We're going to have some set-aside times for members who are paying the annual dues to be part of the Pickleball Association. That money will pay for all the maintenance that's required for new nets, new surfacing, line the parking lot, you name it. But it will take care of itself, and I will not need to come back to you. We will not need to come back to you next year asking for more money because we need to get, you know, the fences fixed. No.
The numbers that you had provided to us before, did you have breakdown for the engineering costs and construction?
All built in. All built in. The number that I got from the people doing the site prep.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all built in to that number.
Do you have the number for the site and the engineering?
The engineering itself? No, I do not.
Okay.
The specifics, I do not. But again, when we go to do the RFP, the final, the big one, it'll be broken down by the penny again and by categories. As I said, I broke this down into what, eight phases of activity? Okay. What you're asking for is part of Phase 1.
What is Phase 1?
Site prep.
And do you remember what the number was?
That was closer to $250,000. That was the biggest chunk right there that we had to set aside for. And again, that's the quote that was given us. What'll be the final bid? When we get more vendors involved, which we will do at the time, it may be much lower.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to propose that we do UFB of 250, and we do the taxpayers for another 250. That way, we have a bit of skin in the game as the town and that we're putting forth for the site and engineering.
Do you want to speak?
I don't know if you guys are going to gay that, but no. I don't want to stop ending.
I'm Dawn Cava, 12 Preserve Drive in Londonderry, also a member of the task force. We have done a lot of work on this. And I just, if any of you have ever seen or played pickleball, we're going to bring it down to the town in January 27th. But anyway, it's very fun. It's very social. I think after COVID, it was probably the reason why it took off so well is because people finally can get back and talk to people and be social. And if you ever saw all the smiles on people's faces, young, old, people playing with their grandchildren, anything, it's not just for old people, anyway. I just wanted to say that I really, I have, my son moved to town here. He bought a house in town. I have a grandchild. In the future, I want to be able to play with him, and I would like to have these courts in Londonderry. And also, on the other thing about how much upkeep it is, there was a study that Steve had said that there's not really as much, that much upkeep anyway, even though. So it's not a lot of money. And also, on what Brian noted about a membership, that doesn't mean that, like he said, they're public courts. We're not going to take all the courts up. If there's 10 courts, we'll use five of them, and then there'll be five open. Or if there's six courts, whatever, it's not going to be like, you'll be able to come and play, and you'll have fun. So hopefully, everybody will be voted up for us. And the taxpayers, you will do whatever you can to say yes to our vote.
Thank you.
Sean Faber, 73 Old Nashville Road. Is this something that the ARPA funds can be used for, or is this not fit into that categorization?
If the $2 million doesn't get used for the water, yes, it's something that the ARPA funds can be used for.
That's what I was thinking, is maybe this should be done from that instead of the unassigned balance?
Yeah, there's not enough money in the ARPA funds right now if the $2 million goes away.
Gotcha.
It's a good question. It's a balancing act right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yes.
I've got a comment.
Sure, of course.
My understanding, we talked earlier, is that those like fee-based decisions aren't final. Is that correct?
They have to all be approved by the council.
And that's, that's my main concern. Like, we're kind of walking into a big project without having a finalized fee-based structure even decided on. And I get, maybe the project comes first. I'm not really excited about more fees for Londonderry residents, given that they get the foot to build a project.
Think about it from this perspective. It's more like LaFSA. It's more like the Wildcats. It's more like these, it's more like that, where we own all the fields and the facilities and everything, and they form a group. And they, and they come to the town and say, hey, we would like to use this. The council may say no, but, you know, it's an idea.
Right.
And those fees are only going to be for members of the Londonderry Pickleball Association that want to be able to make reservations of courts. Those fees enable the users to make reservations. There's still going to be courts open to the public for Londonderry residents who don't want to pay any fees at all, and they're going to be able to play.
Just like you go play tennis today.
The benefit that they're gaining by the fees is the ability to make a reservation.
That is correct. Steve Speziany, 12 Gary Drive. But yeah, that's essentially correct. The idea is that we want to, we, at your discretion, will charge a set dollar value for membership into the Londonderry Pickleball Association. And those members would have the opportunity to book a court earlier than non-members, still residents. But if you and I want to play together and we want to book a week in advance, we can, because we're members. We book court three a week from now. Somebody who's a non, who's a resident who just wants to play but doesn't pay a fee might want to book three days in advance or something like that. And this is something that has to be decided upon. But it is an option. That's how a lot of towns do it.
Yeah, it'd be very comparable to something along the lines of, like in other states, there's counties that own golf courses or states that own golf courses. And if you become a member of it, you get, you get preferential tee times on the weekends. But it doesn't mean that you can't play at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. It'd be more along those lines.
Right.
Understood. I just have the concern that the plan's not in place. It could be moving, right?
The fee is optional.
Well, additionally, there might be more grants that's proposed so that total dollar amount might be a lot less, which would ultimately go.
Yeah, I don't think the maintenance cost is, again, we talked earlier, is huge. I just don't see the reason to have a fee, you know, if taxpayers are paying for it.
And you know what? The people may say, if they, if we go down this path, the people may say, we don't want a fee.
Exactly.
You know, I mean, that's, here in the United States of America, we get to be able to make those decisions.
That's optimistic, which I'd like to go that way. But I'm just saying, since we haven't made a decision, you know.
Yeah, so, all right, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, I would just say, I'm not against pickleball at all. I know everyone up here thinks I am. I'm not against pickleball at all.
I always said you were against it.
I've talked to a lot of people. I'm not against pickleball.
I'll buy you a pickleball set.
I'm against, in this economy, in this tax year that we're in, we have so many warrant articles that are important, that using this money to spend it on pickleball is a need and not a want. I mean, if you're going to choose between giving Dave money to buy plow trucks, would you rather have plow trucks or have pickleball courts? You know, that's all I'm saying, is I'm not against pickleball. I'm just not, I'm against spending $490,000 on pickleball courts. And we could spend that money on things that we need that are on these warrant articles. That's all I'm saying. I'm not against pickleball. You guys did a great job. I just can't justify spending $490,000 when we have other needs in the town that I feel are much more important.
I want to disagree with Ron respectfully that.
No, please.
I think that, that we are behind the other communities in the area. And before we get into ourselves, you know, get ourselves 10 years down the road where we're embarrassingly far behind other communities in the area, this is a nice thing that, that we can do for the residents and do for the seniors who are, who are supporting other areas.
You can disagree with me anytime. I'm a solo guy up here speaking my voice, so. I've just talked to a lot of people, and I just feel like that's, I support pickleball 100%, but I just don't feel like we should be spending taxpayer money right now in this environment to fund it.
Yeah, with the tax impact being the .077 cents for a house assessed at about $500,000, it's 38 bucks for the tax year. And so when I'm thinking about $38 for pickleball as my tax burden, you know, I'm thinking it's a one-time thing, 38, I've spent $38 in a much sillier way. This is an investment in the town, you know? Like, I've bought probably more than $38 with a lottery. This is an investment in the town, you know, like, I've bought probably more than $38 with the lottery tickets that I've gotten zero, Bupkis from. So for 38 bucks, you know, like, I'll give you the pickleball. It's a growing sport, it's up in popularity by 159%. Like, let's, like Patrick said, be the lead, on the leading edge of this, so.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
I just wanted to address the comment about it's for seniors, it really isn't just for seniors. It's, the number-one player in the world is a female, she's 17, and her playing partner isn't, he's, he's an older boy, he's 24. He's also the number-one player in the men, but the, her warm-up partner is her grandfather. This all became a big thing in COVID, somebody said that earlier, when everybody was isolating, but you could only go out and do things with your family, because you were isolating together. This is where this all started, started to explode. So there's a lot of history there, but it's coming down in age, there's a lot of younger players playing regularly now.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend Article 16.
I also know the difference between a want and a need, and I don't disagree with you, if it came down to an ambulance or pickleball court, you know, let's get an ambulance.
We're, we're gonna move, we're gonna move the motions, okay?
Yep, I'm sorry.
We're gonna move the motions.
Can I just say one, one more thing?
Sure.
Dawn Kava, 12 Preserve Drive. You say it's a need, not a want, it's quality of life.
I respect that.
For residents, so just, just take that into consideration.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to amend.
I'm just returning this as public comment, I picked it up by mistake.
What's your motion, Ted? Motion.
I'd like to amend Article 16 to include, to, to reduce by using $250,000 from UFB. So the new number, you know, 490 minus the 250
240.
Would be 240 raised by the taxpayers.
Okay, so what you're asking is, is that you're asking for $250,000 to come from the June 30th unassigned fund balance towards this appropriation.
Thank you for the right wording.
Is that what you're asking for?
Yes.
Council, what say you?
I'll second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No. No.
For one, I am asking for a motion to move this to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
As amended, thank you.
As amended.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move Article 16, Pickleball Courts, to the deliberative, as amended.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm fine with it going to the warrant.
Okay.
Later from the people.
Yeah.
All right, councilors, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
All right. Article 17, amend Londonderry municipal code, so this is a citizen's petition?
Is the petitioner here? Is the petitioner here for amendment to municipal code Title V Administrative Code Chapter 3 Section 1 dot A dot? Petitioner is not here. Shall the town, shall the town vote to amend the Londonderry Municipal Code, V Administrative Code, Chapter 3 Section 1 A to include the planning board as elected positions? This would move the planning board from an appointed by the Londonderry Town Council and being elected by the citizens of Londonderry. I'll accept the motion to move this to the, to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five oh to the warrant. Do be aware that we only receive these, we have not received legal counsel on them yet, so I'm not sure whether these articles are viable or not.
Article 18, again, another citizen's petition, to amend Londonderry Municipal Code Title 1, General Code 1, Section 8 point 13 point B. Shall the town vote to amend Londonderry Municipal Code Title 1, General Code 1, Section 8 point 13 B? Committee organization, to insert the words, include public input at the start and end of each meeting, and after the words, each committee shall. This will allow the general public to have a regular opportunity for public input at each public meeting, allowing for increased communication with the citizens of Londonderry. Again, by citizen's petition, zero tax impact.
Is the petitioner here? I'd like to explain this warrant, this article. Petitioner is not here. We have, we are seeking legal counsel on these, to see if these are viable, and we will hopefully have that by deliberative. In the future, people would know, if you have a citizen's petition, the town does offer free legal service that we will run it past our attorneys, and we'll run it up to the SOS and the DRA for you to find out whether they're viable or not before submitting them. I'll accept the motion to move this to the deliberative session.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Article 19.
Article 19, to amend Londonderry Municipal Code Title 1, General Code 1, Section 8 point 13 A. Shall the town, town vote to amend Londonderry Municipal Code Title 1, General Code 1, Section 8 point 13 A? Meetings, to insert the words, and shall be recorded. After the words, shall meet at a time, the best, oh, sorry.
At a time, the best, the best for the general population. Try English here. This will allow the general public to access the recording at a time most convenient to them, to ensure access for all citizens and all committees and meetings, sorry for interrupting you.
Thank you.
Can we, is the petitioner here? The petitioner is not here to explain this article. Will accept the motion to move this to the deliberative?
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Article 20, to amend Londonderry Municipal Code Title 1, General Code, Section 8 point 13 dash, dot A. Shall the town vote to amend the Londonderry Municipal Code Title 1, General Code, Section 1, 8 point 13 point A? Meetings, to insert the words, of all official town meetings shall be recorded. This will allow the general public access to the meetings at a time most convenient to them, to ensure for access to the citizens for all committees' meetings. Is the petitioner here to explain this warrant, this article? The petitioner is not present.
Is this a little redundant from the last one?
Seems like a repeat from the last one.
Well, this is the way they submit it.
Copy.
I'll accept the motion to move this to deliberative.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, if there's any public comment on these, please, please speak up.
Article 21, Town Manager Plan, do you favor the continuation of the Town Manager's Plan as now in force in this town, by citizen's petition?
It actually says the continuation of the Town Manager Plan as now in force in this town, not the Town Manager's Plan.
Thank you.
So I'm not sure what this means, is the petitioner here to explain this? Because this doesn't, we don't understand what this means. Will accept the motion to move this to the, to the warrant, to, to the deliberative session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes affirmative. To amend Article 22, Article 22, amend the Londonderry Municipal Codes, Set, Title V Administrative Code, Chapter 3. Shall the town vote to amend the Londonderry Municipal Code? Chapter, Chapter 3, Boards, Committees, and Commissions, Selection 1, General Authority, Section 1B, to remove the word advisory from the Budget Committee in accordance with RSA 40 colon 14 dash B that states that the Budget Committee shall create the default budget. Really should have asked for legal advice on this one.
Mr. Chair?
Is the, is the petitioner here? Would like to explain this one? The petitioner is not here. I'll accept the motion to move the deliberative.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative.
Article 23, Transaction of Other Business, to transact any other business that shall, that may legally come from this meeting. No business enacted under this article shall have any binding effect upon this town.
I'll accept the motion to move Article 23 to the deliberative.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five zero. I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just ask, acquire of the Finance Director, when the last date is that he will need the Budget Committee's recommendations in order to comply with the posting requirement?
17.
I can.
As soon as possible, is the answer.
We're meeting Wednesday the 17th, at 7:00.
If you don't mind emailing them to me that night, that way I can post them first thing in the morning.
Okay. Okay. Budget Committee, you guys can go if you want, we have a council meeting, we gotta run still. So it's up to you, I'll give you, we'll take, we'll take a few-minute break here, and reopen a new public hearing.
Okay.
Do they want to stay for that?
Wait, what's the new public?
Wait.
It's on the one.
Do they have to stay for the bond?
We gotta stay for the bond.
Oh.
Mike.
And when am I doing the bond, right now?
Right now.
All right, so Budget Committee, you stay for a few minutes, we'll do the bond real quick. Sorry about that, I was trying to get you out of here.
We appreciate it.
So proud.
Hey, I still.
I'll go for, you gotta teach me how to play.
Sorry about that, Ryan, drives these guys a solid, get you out of here.
I, I was like, I don't know how to play pickleball, but I was like, I put the map on it, and I was like, here's where you go. Give them the pickleball, give them the pickleball, you know?
The default budget, it's just an equation, right? That's service and labor.
So we can't.
Ooh, go.
I was gonna run to the men's room, then we'll come back and reopen the public hearing.
All right.
We're gonna go talk to Justice, hold that thought, since we have a second.
You follow your budget, because you're mandated, dude.
Yeah. Tell me what, let me know what you can't, that hasn't been signed yet.
I don't understand.
You need that, and you need this. That's what I told you about at the beginning of the meeting. I used initials for the motions.
The last one, I'm like, does that mean we write the budgets? Or like, get to strike things? I'll term it the default.
Yeah.
Yeah. Open a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative. Where's my bond guy?
Mr. Chairman, I don't, I, I, hopefully he'll trickle in here soon, but I don't think there's much to be done. I mean, this is an exact replica of the discussion that we had, uh, when we were discussing the warrant article. There's a, a statutory requirement that we conduct a bond hearing. I would suggest that, uh, the council, uh, receive whatever public input there is. And, uh, just determine whether this needs to move, is, whether it is appropriate to move this to the warrant, uh, to the deliberative. Um, and Justin, I was just explaining that I don't think, you know, I, I don't think there's much additional in terms of a bond hearing, uh, beyond the discussion that was had. But certainly if there are questions about how the Municipal Finance Act works or how, uh, financing authority may work, that would be an appropriate time.
Yes.
Okay, so for Article 3, um, so we're looking to raise, um, raise bond for, this is for Article 3, right?
Correct.
For Article 3, uh, for the loan, uh, authorization for a high-range road water supply extension project. So are there any questions from the, uh, council or from the Budget Committee regarding the, uh, the bond we have to raise?
I will commend our town manager and our Finance Director for all their hard work, working with the state to get this through and fine-tune the number.
All right.
Your counselor comes.
Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to, um, to move Article 3 to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Deliberative, I should say. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, the, um, council votes yes?
Aye.
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 Five zero, so just add that one to the paper I, I gave you, Cameron. Um, I'm gonna, so I'm done with the Budget Committee now?
Yes.
I can let them go? I know, I'm gonna leave the public hearing open because I have another public hearing right behind it. Sorry about keeping you here, Budget Committee, any longer than we had to. Trust me, I understand. Um, okay, public hearing, the issuance of a loan pertaining to the extent, oh, we just did that, okay. So-
We can close the- Mr. Chairman, on this, on this item, uh, very straightforward. Unfortunately, it's one of those weird, you know, for us dog lovers, the dogs are considered personal property. We had the introduction of Rue, the comfort dog, the last, uh, the last hearing. This is to formally accept Rue as personal property. Uh, but like I said, those of us who are dogs, dog lovers, uh, you know, that, that's a little bit, uh, disrespectful.
So this is Resolution 2024 dash 01?
Yes.
All right, so motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Resolution 20, uh, 24 dash 01, acceptance of a non-monetary donation under RSA 31: Colon 19 E, Section 3.
So moved.
Second.
You're approving it already?
Yes.
Um, what's that? Motion, um, motion for approval, second. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative.
I'll approve anything for that cute.
Order 2024 dash 01, withdrawal from the Recreation Department's capital reserves. According to the, uh, according to the internet, this is, uh, you know, the, uh, from what I've been reading from everybody, this is supposed to be some new recreational vehicle and someone made a wisecrack about the, the old one. We drive around for Old Home Day, that we should use that instead. And, uh, what do you guys want to do here? Looks like, it's, looks like it's something we're in need of.
Could I just ask, yeah, just gonna ask, what, what are we specifically gonna use it for?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
I'm gonna call this a gator because I've always called it a gator and I can't call it anything else without scampering. We have one gator that's like 10, 11, 12 years old. And a few years back, we picked up taking, doing more work, um, at Laffa. And we have the softball field to take care of and all of the surrounding areas. And we didn't have a gator. And, uh, Laffa used to let us use one of their pseudo-gators. Their pseudo-gators have died and they didn't know if they were gonna get them running. And, um, we need two. We basically need two that are ours. We'll have one up there and then we'll have one down at West Road. And that's, we had, we asked for two, actually, I think we asked, we asked for two, um, accessories. Like, we, on the bid, we asked for it to be air-cooled because we didn't want to mess with the antifreeze and the engine size, so it was big enough. And we wanted the brush guard on the front because sometimes we have to go along fences and try to get rid of that brush that's unsightly and whatnot. And that'll protect the front of it. Uh, and we wanted the cargo bed. It does have bucket seats. I don't know why they, we didn't ask for bucket seats. I think it's what they had there and I have no idea. A bucket, it, don't get too excited about the bucket seat. It's a molded seat, which they all have, and it's not very comfortable. And there's not much cushion to it either, so.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Is this, uh, a gas vehicle or an electric vehicle?
It's a gas vehicle.
Wonderful.
Problem with being an electric vehicle, if we're out and about.
Uh, what is the top speed, do you know?
Slow. I, I think it's six, eight miles an hour.
Okay.
It's, it, maybe nine. But when, you gotta understand, when we're on the fields, we're never going that fast because then we just have to fix them, so.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt or approve Order 2024 dash 01.
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Art.
Thank you, Art. This is coming out of the, this is coming out of that recreational trust fund that we have that we just established again. So, all right, um, old business. Uh, approval of minutes from, uh, December 19th, 2023. I'll accept a motion to, uh, to approve the minutes as presented.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve December 18th, 2023 minutes.
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did I? Sorry. Um, reappointment of Todd Ellis to the Recreation Committee. I'll accept the motion to reappoint Mr. Ellis.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Ellis, see the clerk to, uh, to be sworn in. Uh, liaison reports. Town manager report.
Not this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing else there? Okay.
Sure.
All right, um, our next council meeting is January 22nd at 7 o'clock. Um, I'll ask for adjournment.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.